All hands, probably reading the order. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two minutes, and a crack three. Motion again, second.
Second.
You have a second, all hands say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Who do the bills?
There are a couple of highway bills on there that are going to be moved through later.
Just two here.
I make a motion to pay the bills minus the highway bills for later.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any other questions about the bills? Roll call.
Lyphon?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Britt?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Financial, gang.
We are... Pretty good. Few of them, few are in the red due to like funding not coming back from the state yet.
Okay.
So, that's just... I'm gonna wait to transfer money to the LEC. I'll search towards the end of the year. Otherwise, everything's, you know, about fifty, about fifty percent of our budget spent, so...
Any questions?
I have a motion to move financial.
You have a motion, you have a second?
Second.
You have a second? No other questions? Roll call.
Britt?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Lyphon?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye. Treasure checks. Any good proof?
Say.
The motion, a second on the treasure checks. Any discussion? Roll call.
Olson?
Aye.
Britt?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Lyphon?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Approval of agenda, anything to add?
Approve, approve.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second, all hands say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Mr. Otis?
Martin.
Martin.
Um, been gone for two weeks, just got back from Alaska about three nights ago, so I'm still kinda trying to get adjusted to the different time chain. But, in that moment, um, we did get notification that our district director Ron Weederholt is retiring as of October 4th. Uh, gonna stay on part-time, I'm not sure the role of the county part of that yet, but he had some projects that he wants to finish up. So, they're gonna appoint an intern, I'm telling him to get a replacement, not sure what that process will be just yet. So, you'll be seeing somebody new sometime in not-so-far-distant future. Our office has been extremely busy, um, and of course with the addition of a lot of mini camps, we've got mini camps coming up next week. One is a fishing camp that I'm hosting for kids, we've got, I got some guides hired to help me take kids out fishing. Those that are registered, we got a barbecue boot camp coming up next week, uh, just to name a couple. Um, but lots of stuff going on, and here we are, fall already, and we'll be preparing for roundup next month already. Hard to imagine where this whole spring, summer thing went, but here we are. And of course, we're still needing some rain up north, we're very dry up north, very dry. So, kind of, you know, what are you smiling about there?
Well, summer goes fast, but don't worry, you get faster buildings and things like that.
There's never. Terrible. Terrible.
He's smiling because he got rain the other day.
Did we get any?
We're anxious. We even less worried.
Yeah, everyone handed nothing, stuck with their nothing.
We need some, we're good.
Well, it's already kind of getting almost a little late. Almost.
Probably.
Yeah. Any questions?
Comments? We got your budgets, right?
I, I, we're already done that.
We're done with that?
Yep.
I thought we were done with that today.
When you first went over them, Stacy was not here that day, and I come in and fill there.
Very good.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Stacy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
remain busy, uh, doesn't seem to light up for anything, but, uh, the ten today, uh, military outreach at Stump Lake Park, uh, twentieth of July. Wasn't well attended by veterans, but the emphasis was on women veterans and Bluewater Navy veterans. And we had many women did show up, and, uh, just a few or a couple of the Bluewater Navy veterans showed up. So, it was, uh, not well attended, but yet the job got done. Uh, one mentioned the one thing, uh, yesterday, I thought that the VA had planted a, uh, eyeglass kit in my lap and told me I must assist veterans in getting fitted for eyeglasses. I'm not trained for that, I went down Friday, last Friday, to the VA and had a few words with them, the people down there. Yesterday, I get a call and it said, "Well, the clinic will take the glass frames off my hands." Monday afternoon, I get a call and the clinic says they're giving them back to me, they can't deal with it either. What this means is veterans who can get a, uh, eyeglass appointment locally can't get glasses locally. They have to drive to Fargo to pick out frames, and then they were expected to drive back to Fargo to get these frames fitted. The frames would come to them in the mail, and then they're expected to go back to Fargo to give them fitted. I'm gonna make a call to the senator's office and voice our displeasure with this, uh, program. It's, it's something we fought years ago about putting veterans on the road, especially in the winter time, and elderly veterans. With what they're doing right now, they just reversed it. And, uh, so this is not, it's not a good thing. So, I will not be a part of trying to fit veterans for eyeglasses. I had one gentleman last week come in and, yeah, it was a learning experience, uh, he picked out his frames in a matter of just a few minutes, but we find out we can't do nothing for them. So, we got another little battle on our hands, so... Other than that, everything is going pretty good. Just stayed busy.
Did the clinic have any ideas about that, frames, or?
Well, I assume that the optometry department at the VA in Fargo called them to ask them to take it on. And they were, the nurses, they were glad, the staff, they, "Oh heck yeah, we'll do this." Then their manager, who's, I believe, is from rugby, or from not in this area anyway, came in and they started looking into it. And it, it, single vision glasses wouldn't be a problem, but as you know, most of us elderly people need bifocals or trifocals. And that's where the buzz comes in, fitting the different measurements, and you have to go to an optometrist for that. We're, we're not, we're not prepared for any of that kind of thing, so...
Would, would any of the optometrists in Devil's Lake be willing to be sort of partners?
They used to, the VA took this away, they had a company, contracted company with the frames, was out of New York. They lost the contract, then it switched to a company in Florida, and that's when the ball got dropped. Uh, they do, the VA has well over a hundred, uh, variety of frames to pick from. So, I asked the gentleman in Fargo, I said, "What would it take for a local company to get involved with these frames?" I said, "It would be a thousand dollar investment," he says, "Oh no, far below that." So, if we could get the local companies to invest into these sample frames, then we'd be back to where it was before. I haven't had those conversations with any of the locals yet, but...
I, I think, I think that might be a worthwhile thing, and I'd be willing to, to help, you know, if you, if you and I wanted to go and talk to some of these people. I think, uh, there are probably several that would be, you know, amiable to helping out veterans.
Twenty twenty I Care and the I Clinic both have worked with veterans in the past, but, and they still do. The, uh, veteran has the option of going to his local provider, and, and that, that, those are companies that work with them, they have frames before. But, when that contract was lost to the New York company, and the Florida company now has a different set of rules, and it gets it kind of a pain.
But if it's just a matter of obtaining the frames, you know, if, even if, even if the county had to burden that, you know, expense, and then those frames could be placed in whichever optometry or both optometry, uh, locations that were willing to work with us, you're still gonna be providing a much, much better service than asking people to drive far between. That's a really worthwhile investment.
That driving thing is what got a lot of the VA issues and trouble anyway, so...
Do we need to involve the gentleman from, to a man, right, from rugby? Supervisor, is that what it is?
It's a, a woman, and, uh, I don't know, I think when you hear their side of it, the, the staff was willing to, but soon as they got into the particulars of fitting the frames, for example, the gentleman we had last week, picked out a frame, he didn't like, I had, the, the, the kit came with twenty-three frames. Uh, male, unisex, and female, so it's not an attractive selection. Their catalog came with it, well, he flipped to the second page, "I want them," so a matter of two minutes, he picked out frames, okay? We, we were aware of that, there was a certain form that the VA had to have, which they didn't include in the kit, I got that on Friday. And, uh, so I was explaining this to the clinic up there, "Well, the frames you order out of the catalog can't be fit to your face without the actual frame being there because of that bifocal, uh, situation, the measurements, pupil to pupil, uh, forehead." I mean, there's, gets a lot involved.
Okay, but do we need to be involved with the supervisors so they can?
I, I don't think so.
You guys can?
No, I think this is something that's gonna go back to the VA and work with the local providers like it should be now, like it was in the past.
That's good, okay. Yeah, thank you, it was physically volunteering.
Yeah, and I'd, I'd be happy to help, I'm, I'm, I have good relationships with both Lane Verdic and Mark Moan, and I'd be happy to talk to at least both of them.
At, at your convenience, most likely not today, but any other day.
And I think, I think they, they'll be able to see the benefit, you know, might not saying they'll agree to do it, but I think that they see the, the benefits to the community.
And hopefully, if it's less than a thousand dollar investment, uh, and we're gonna help the veterans, that's, uh, that's not too, shouldn't be tough on anybody.
Oh, that should work out well, I think.
Well, I mean, we're good in the sixth, the ad campaign on the radio writes itself, right? We're the, we're the local provider for all veterans, you know?
Yeah.
I Care.
There you go.
Anyway, thanks a bit, but I'll talk more about that later.
Anything else, Stacy?
I got nothing, anybody got any questions?
Questions? Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Stacy.
Roger.
Yeah.
Oh, we lose eight.
All right. First of all...
I didn't even have to look at your steps yet, I'm sorry, had a hard time finding the courthouse today.
It's just good to see that you guys get a chance to take a look at the steps from the south side, walk up and down a couple times, and if they're good with you, we're good.
I think they look good.
They are, yeah.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, the, the one that cracked is just a slight little dip in and still, but for the cost of fixing was pretty well done, good, I thought.
Yeah, I think it was about as good an act as before, as far as what we're doing with money.
All right.
Everyone? Everybody else all right? Any luck?
Yeah, they sealed them up real nice, we talked in the cracks.
Really?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we'll leave them at that then. Okay, for the, uh, sanding the floors, um, we got three estimates, um, from FLR Sander to seventeen, six, eighty-three. Halderman-Hammy was eleven, nine, fifty, and APS is the ten, seven, fifty. So, um, I've talked to references from all three companies, uh, Halderman-Hammy, they're the ones that did the, uh, sports center. And, um, school was very happy with the work they did. And the APS, the low estimate, I talked to Minot State yesterday, and, and just this morning, I talked to a guy from UND. And, uh, yeah, they said they had no issues, so... I guess those two are by far the lowest, so whichever...
Do you have a finished date down, do they, do they?
Uh, both parties, it was like three weeks, they figured, one, I think Halderman said, "Well, we'll just say a month." And, uh, we, they both know that this is supposed to be done sometime between July and mid-October next year. So, they know that they're supposed to do it in that time period and be done in that time period, because that's what we blocked off, because originally we're thinking of replacing the floor, so...
There's a time period when they're gonna start?
Didn't actually give us that, but...
But we're gonna allow them not to start and then take off on us, or?
Oh, well, no. But, uh, they know they have to be done in that time period. So...
Did you say you talked to, to Minot State about APS?
Yeah, and, um, Minot State, uh, the guy I talked to says, "Well, I'm new here, you shouldn't have talked to the guy who just retired." But he said he had, as far as due, he had no issues, and like I said, I just talked to UND this morning, and they had said that, yeah, the work that APS had done for them, they were, they were certainly happy with it. So, um, I guess I never got a reply from NDSU, but...
Well, it's good enough for them.
So, is, is it all the same with the volleyball covers and the painting of the lines and, you know?
They all said they paint, repaint the lines just like we have them. Pickleball, what works, so...
I make a motion to accept a little bit.
I see.
Here we have a motion, a second. On a little bit. Any other questions or comments? All hands say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Anything else, Roger?
No, that's it.
That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you. Crystal?
Going with that, probably works, I thought it would be worse, too.
Sorry to bring these policies back in, but when I went back and listened to the recording, I noticed that we only approved the hiring process, that we decided we wanted to make sure that we had had these ones approved to move forward, um, for including, so it's eliminating two-eleven employment applications policy, and that would be reasoning for, um, because we're lost to the application and every new job policy. And the other one's at two-twelve, the background check policy procedure.
Any questions, Crystal, on any policies?
Pretty much what we agreed to approve, we were talking about before, and we were fine, we just didn't make a motion to approve it.
Right.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve this with the two policy.
Second.
Or, excuse me, approve the one policy and remove the other policy, correct?
Right.
A motion and a second. Any other questions? All hands say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Anything else at this time, Crystal?
Yeah, everybody got their packets for the interviews today, and, okay, did you want me to sit in on the interviews, or?
Yeah, I'd appreciate that.
That sounds good.
Are you sure we won't ask you anything else, Crystal? Sounds good.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Kevin?
First of all, our, our project updates, we're basically relation on the truck route, gonna start next Monday, twelve. I think that's a pretty firm date this time, and pretty committed to that date, so... We were up there and landed yesterday and Thursday, with the rain, it turned out pretty good this time.
Able to cut a little bit?
Yeah.
Those ridges out?
Getting a little rough.
I drove it after we got those calls, I mean, it was rough on the ends, but the main part of the road wasn't too bad, so... So, I can see we were pumping and stuff, I'm sure. They're taking the rest.
In our worst, yeah.
My road right now isn't everywhere, and I think I can.
Uh, chip seal project is done, they did strike the, the actual chip seals themselves, we've got some to re, re-strike up north yet. We, every three years, we're painting lines, but those are the ones that, so they're not quite done striking, but that chip seal project is done. Graalland Ramsey Four is up north, north to seventeen, that's done. Graalland Ramsey County Nine is gonna start on Monday also, that's their tentative date. It might be a couple days after that, the way they're, they're actually calling for some townships right now, so for dark. So, as soon as they get that done, they'll start on nine. Uh, paper patches from Strata, those will be starting, some though will be done next, next week, no, not exactly what date it was starting, but they'll be working on next week.
Kevin committed there on the, on the rotten bridge, there's a rotten bridge down there, that a hole on the outside.
Yeah.
Can we fill that in on the paper patches, or we have another plan? Can we do that ourselves?
Yeah, we just put, it's not a very deep hole. It's not a very big hole, so we're just, we've just been putting stuff in it, but eventually, we'll have to see what's going on there.
Okay.
Where, where are we all, where do you put the patches?
Where off?
Yeah.
Uh, we put a culvert in on four south of Doug Bridges on that curve, so there'll be a paper patch there, and then a little ways south of there, there's some breakups. And then also on three by Ray Schwan's, there's some short sections there. And then over by Roardville, well, not Roardville, uh, next to, down, south of, um, there's a couple smalls, I mean...
North end of four there?
Yeah.
And then? Just before.
Yeah. Closer to store six. Any other questions? Bridge removals, we, we're still working on the one on Ramsey Two out here east of town, but we should have, uh, completely covered today in just a little bit of cleanup. Hopefully, we'll get everything moved either by the end of the day or tomorrow morning, we'll move up to, close the bridges up north, start working on it. Uh, slip line that culvert on Ramsey Three, he's gonna start that next week. And the rain gutters are done, on the main shop at the, at the shop there.
That culvert on Three is a drive out, do you think?
I have been up there for a while, it's a good question.
It was running.
It was running last time I was there, but that was probably a couple, three weeks ago.
Yeah, I was there like this week. No, last week, you know, it was trickling, kind of, not, not running fast.
Yeah, I just run, it's not running quickly.
He'll have to culler one side, do, there's two there, so he'll run the water through one and... Any other questions on those projects?
Sounds like we're getting a lot done next week.
Yeah. It may be short bodies, but we'll, we'll make it work. Okay, our mini excavator is here now, so thousand ninety-one thousand, so we need a motion to pay for that as part of the bills.
Move to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second on the mini excavator, any questions? Roll call.
Lyphon?
Aye.
Britt?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Brown?
Uh, final cost for our chip seal was four hundred thirty-three thousand, seven ninety-three, forty cents. So, need a motion to pay that bill, so...
Second. We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Roll call.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Britt?
Aye.
Lyphon?
Aye.
Brown?
Yeah, I met with the water board this morning, and they, they have a recommendation for those two bridges up north. Again, these culverts are ordered already, but generally, we, we make a motion to accept their recommendation. So, their recommendation is, was, uh, Newland Township Bridge was three eighty-four inch arch, and the Triumph Township Bridge was four eighty-four inch arch. So, what I'm looking for is just a, a motion to accept their recommendation.
Okay.
That's what we have coming?
Yep, that's what we're ordering.
I'll make a motion to accept their, uh, recommendation.
Second. We have a second, motion and a second. All hands say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
So, the culverts are laying at the project for one of them, but the other one is, they're still coming, they're still being built. So, we may end up doing that next year, 'cause we're gonna run out of time. We have to start mowing road ditches the third week in August, or we get behind there, so... There'll just be one for next year, as it turns out. So, the cost of those culverts, for those, those two bridges was forty thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and forty cents. Will be approved, second.
A motion and a second, any other discussion? Roll call.
Olson?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Britt?
Aye.
Lyphon?
Aye.
Brown?
And along with that, we have the culverts for Ramsey Two on the east ditch, and there's already been a motion to order, uh, I guess, order those. Maybe we didn't have a motion to pay for them, so... And we'll be billing the city for those at forty-four thousand, nine twenty-four eighty. So, I guess...
I'll make a motion that we pay to bill.
Second. A motion and a second, any discussion?
Can I ask one question? Sure. I, I have a question to ask me, uh, those ones are coated black, what's, what's the difference, I mean, why were they coated versus not coated?
Plastic lined.
So, they, oh, so they're plastic lined right out of the bed, then? Okay, that's not what I thought.
They're metal culverts, but inside and outside are plastic lined, they say you can get another twenty-five, forty years out of it, depending on soil conditions.
That's kind, kind of what I figured was happening, but I was just kinda curious.
They're remotes, thirty percent power cost, but...
People ask me about it.
Well, what's, what's the useful life of a, of a non-lined culvert, I think, had a discussion?
Uh, soil, you know, soil's a big deal, but anywhere from thirty to fifty years.
And so that then, plastic lined ones can go another thirty to forty?
Thirty to thirty.
Wow, the, the useful lifespan is bigger than thirty percent, right, so it's a federal investment?
We have started putting it in all of our federal aid rooms, on the centerline, not on, on approaches, on the centerline, so...
Oh, yeah, something that you can, uh, something that you can't get to and dig out, it's easy, makes sense to put in a better one, I suppose.
Right.
Plus the plastic lining, so we can pour faster and...
A little water, a little bit of water, a little water, a little water. Yeah. The only issue we haven't figured out yet is how, if it's gonna burn, we're hoping not, but, but there is metal there also, you know, so...
And that question right away?
Yeah, we don't know, I mean, it might, the fire might come out right away, is what we're hoping, you know, that there's no, no fuel to keep it going.
Do you think, do you think it'd improve the life of the culvert by thirty percent?
More, more than thirty, almost double.
Almost double.
Yeah.
Well, plastic does dry.
No.
Thirty percent.
Assuming we don't get a crack in the plastic, that's gonna put water in behind on top of the steel, I mean, it should, it should make it a long time, you know?
The cost is thirty percent.
Well, and even that just becomes a regular culvert.
But in the difficult spots to put them in, it's all worth it.
Yeah, especially on the main line where it's asphalt or something like that.
Yeah.
I already know the answers.
Saw that they had hooks on top of them too, so it looked like it probably a little easier to get in the place where you wanted a motion to be there.
Yeah.
Sounds good, maybe. Do we have a roll call? No. Roll call.
Lypon?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Britt?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Go ahead, Kevin.
All right, a call for quotes on the Graal one and Nelson Ramsey County line, south of Doyen. Soap was low at six forty-nine yard, and close was the other quote at seven seventy. So that project's gonna cost around thirty-two thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, and I think. The last time we talked about it, it was closer to sixteen thousand.
Sixteen? Wanna accept that soap bid?
Yeah, yep.
That's all we need to do right now, right?
Right.
Move to accept a little bit.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Second, all fairs say aye?
Aye.
All fold, motion carries.
And I need to order some sign posts for inventory, then I got quotes from Three D Fargo. For twenty-three fifty-four, and limited signs of James Sound for twenty-eight seventy-three. So we need a motion to accept that little pull it off, so.
We have a motion and a second?
Second.
And a second, all fairs say aye?
Aye.
All fold, motion carries.
And I need some culverts for stock, for a stock order. And it will cost ten thousand eight sixteen twenty. Move to approve, second.
A motion and a second to approve for purchase of stock order culverts? Any discussion? All fairs say aye?
Aye.
All fold, motion carries.
And the quotes for the. Lawn mower, I think I included that. In the total cost or, or the bid for those. I guess I was hoping for a gravely from iron, iron height, they weren't below bid, but. The one from Nap of the Toro. That is a smaller engine than I was specing, that Toro V twin, so it doesn't really meet spec either. The one from Butler, which would be the next lowest. Does meet all the specs except for the warranty. Has a lightside warranty on the deck, it has a really, really. Beefed up deck. And a three-year warranty on the rest of the machine. Like I said, I was hoping for a gravely, but I think that simplicity from Butler would be a, it's a really, really. Commercial, well-built, heavy-duty mower.
Is there a reason we're hoping for the other one?
Uh, the fuel economy from that Kawasaki engine, I, I did spec the Kawasaki. And, uh. It uses about half the fuel as everybody, every other engine.
Really?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
It's diesel or gas?
It's gas.
It's gas? That's one from iron height, right?
Right.
So that, the Hustler from Nap, it doesn't meet spec either?
No, it doesn't have the suspension seat, that was the one thing I really wanted, because those, uh, cemeteries are so rough. It's a solid mounted seat.
Definitely worth having.
Both the. Iron height and Butler, their seats are really nice. So I would be happy with either one of those. However you wanna do this.
How many hours do we usually put on here, on, any idea?
Um, it depends on rain, of course, but it takes us about four days, three and a half days, so then, there's some travel time there, so. Probably twenty-five hours every two to three weeks, something like that. And then that's just summertime, like six months.
Do, uh, are we trading in one, no?
Well. My trade is worth more than what the blue one is, so I, either we, we should sell it outright, or, or something like that, rather than trade it in and. They'll pay us money.
What kind do you have?
We have a John Deere utility tractor with a three-point PTO and bucket, but it doesn't have a bucket, but it's got the controls for the bucket.
But it's not very handy in a cemetery?
No, I mean, six, so, I'm looking at cutting my time in half with one of these. That thing is just slowest that's ever worked.
Do, these have a, a rear discharge on them, or?
No, they're all side discharge.
All side discharge?
Yeah.
I know the city uses a rear discharge in the cemetery, so they don't.
Blow it into them.
Blow it onto the headstones.
Just hopefully this syrup turn eliminates some of the weed eating also. Good luck closer to the headstones, and to the fences, trees. That was the goal, is to try and cut my time in half with one of these. With this mower.
Could imagine if we, well, it's a big John Deere, they could take a loader on it. That's gotta be a chore in, in a cemetery.
I, I know going from a, a lawn tractor to a, as your return in my yard, cut my time in half or more.
If you got a lot of trees and want to out them.
And I'm thinking there's headstones we're going around.
Is the Kawasaki engine, is that worth the, what?
Well.
Two hundred or so?
So, I'm sorry, so the, this, the one that meets spec other than the warranty, that simplicity you said?
Right.
And then the next lowest would be that gravely then?
Yep, exactly.
And does that have the warranty you want?
Yes, it does.
Well, then I see no reason not to go with the one that he wants, I mean, if the engine is as fuel efficient as you say, it'll save the difference, a little useful life anyway.
Yeah, that's kinda where I, where I find getting that too, 'cause it's got, if it's more, the engine's more fuel efficient, plus you're getting an additional year of warranty on the whole machine. For about two hundred and twenty-five.
And the motor I wanted.
Yeah. I mean, that sounds reasonable, I mean, they're, they're all in the same ballpark.
Yeah, they're, I would be, I didn't realize they were all that close to impact.
Competitive.
Yeah.
Which one would you prefer?
I was hoping for a gravely.
I will make a motion to accept the iron height bid with the gravely.
Okay, motion for that, we have a second?
Second.
Second, any other discussion?
Thank you.
All fairs say aye?
Aye.
All fold, motion carries.
Motion to put an add in the paper to get the ditches mode, that's something that's required by the central code. So.
A motion and a second, we have a second, all fairs say aye?
Aye.
All fold, motion carries. Online bridge?
Okay, I did talk to. I can't think of the name, and Benson Cowie, and he was gonna bring his, uh, concern to the commission today. Uh, he did say that that bridge. Needs work already, the guardrails were bad, bad shape, and the head, or the wing walls had washed away. Uh, not the walls themselves, but the dirt, and they need to do some backfiller. But other than that, he said that he was, he said he wasn't gonna bring it to his commission. He would, he had talked to the state about what it was gonna cost, and it was like ten thousand dollars, that's what I was told also. So. Maybe if we get two or three of my town, the county's got one too, we could save some money there, I don't know. Seems to make sense, since they had one versus three.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
So. Um. I guess maybe we should wait and see what things it wants to do there.
Okay.
And this is for the, uh, the divers to go in and inspect?
Yes.
Killers, yeah?
Maybe the town has got some too.
Town has got one.
One.
And their detour is only like two miles to, so. Not sure what they're gonna do. I haven't talked to them, I emailed them, but I didn't get a response.
Okay, be as honest, though.
Yeah, maybe they, or, oh, we can, I can bring that up again at the next meeting, I.
Okay.
Gosh, I can't think of his name, but he should have an answer for me by then too.
Ellington?
Yeah. Lester, thank you. Okay. This leadership for high-performance leadership training is something that, uh, Mark's brother, uh. The National Association of Counties is doing some. Training for leadership. And they're doing, uh. Scholarships, so they pay for the first part of the. Certain amount of, like, the first person gets a first fifteen hundred dollar scholarship. And then anybody after, for the next. Few people, like eighteen people get a four hundred and ninety-five dollar scholarship. And I talked to most of the department managers, I didn't talk to Katie, I did. All of them are pretty, this is a busy time for them also. I was thinking of taking it in September, and Crystal's interested also. The rest of the department managers, it's a busy season for them, so it'd just be the two of us, it's all a web-based. Information, but, for training. But it's gonna be over two thousand, it's twenty-one hundred and ninety dollars for Crystal, I had to take it.
And it, was it a twelve-course deal, or a twelve-week deal?
Twelve-week deal, yes.
Looks like a really interesting program, Kevin showed me the, the information on it.
Association of Counties is, I've talked to a lot of people, I've taken it, never, nobody's, uh, a negative word, they all said it's a really good program.
Association of Counties is big, aren't they?
National, yeah.
I think it's a fine idea, uh, the only question that I have is, is if you're both taking it, how do we, how do we split the cost by the departments? What's happening to your budget?
I already told Crystal that she could have the first fifteen, my budget can handle it better.
Be honest? Okay.
I might, yeah, my, I do have my budget a little bit to cover my part, and if he lets him take the lower part, so.
Yeah, that's something for you.
Move to approve.
Okay, so a motion and a second, any other question? Comments? All fairs say aye?
Aye.
All fold, motion carries.
And last one, I was, uh, we have some vehicles, the student sheriff and I, for sale. We should think about how to auction. Whenever it's a good time, it never, it's never a good time, but.
September.
Can't say September.
Okay.
So you wanna get everything together so we can advertise in September, is that what you're saying?
So we can get what we need in the building and.
Okay. We got stuff around here.
Oh, yeah.
It's time, huh?
Well, I, I, I suggest that we do it in the off-year of election, so that. So we haven't had one for a while.
And I can sign items, and, or get a couple of them. I got some stuff to get rid of there.
And we fell off the parking lot?
We got all kinds of stuff, like, hold in here.
Dude. I just thought, was it feasible to put somebody's vehicle on a consignment, is there any auctions going on this fall, do we know of, or? Is that what we, we get better advertising?
Well, we, we, I mean, I've had phone calls, have people inquiring, asking if, if we're gonna have a surplus for, for looking for vehicles. It's the usual, why isn't that?
There's gonna be like three expeditions. One explorer, pickup, should be a good sale, I mean, hopefully we get better.
That's the thing.
Yeah.
If we advertise, you know, we just. More or less put it into legal, that's what we do, and, or we can buy an ad. You know, kind of in the journal, whatever, a couple of whatever, but. Would be, be beneficial to put on, somebody add-on, you know, consignment auction or something, or.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know if Swenson's having one or not.
I think legally, I think we can do that. As long as they're an option.
Until somebody tells us we can.
Yeah, that's a, that's a grid, that's a grid player.
It's going to the state sale, not the answer.
Yeah. Yeah, no, this.
I don't know that they would take county property at a state sale.
I've never seen one go through those counties.
But I would say whenever you get all of your items, somebody should run around with a camera and load them on the county's website, too. And that's what we've done, that's what we've done in the past, yeah.
Well, that is beautiful, you've had a long time, this, this is, I'm gonna have a, a wow factor, you know, a desk, a desk, a desk, a desk, a desk.
I mean, there's, there's always the option to do, you know, do.
I, I was just thinking, if I get more bitters than this.
Um, I would make that online.
A lot of.
You could, you could open an online auction, like a week beforehand, and then the day of, whatever the, whatever the high bid online is where the bidding starts, and if anybody beats it in person, so.
It's okay, yeah.
Well, yeah, if you have some bids, do that for you.
I really don't.
I'm trying to sidestep the auction.
A lot of counties are doing the online.
Yeah, you can buy stuff like IQ bid, who staff is, they have, they have two monthly auctions that are just open to anybody, so you can post that online.
They actually have a go of it, uh. Place that.
I sold a lot of stuff these days.
Which, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah. That's a good, good, good system, just ask someone who buy it online.
Are you interested in trying that, online?
I was just gonna say, what's, what's the cost to do it?
That's a good question.
There's, there's.
There's a cut percentage.
It's a percentage of sale.
What percentage and it's capped?
The advertising, it's huge.
But we don't list the whole.
No, I.
We don't, we don't list the, the.
Every desk and.
No.
No, I would say if you were gonna do this.
We just, we just put like a little, um.
Well, even like this, if you were gonna sell desks and the miscellaneous stuff from the courthouse, I think we should still probably do that internally, but the bigger items like the vehicles. Get them in front of the more eyes.
We just put like a small box ad saying that the county's gonna have a surplus, you know, that you can move to our website. Um, pick up, pick up a list, you know, from our office.
We'll be selling our pickup with the utility box on the back, so there's gonna be some decent deals.
Right, right. Do you want minimum bid on there, some of those too?
Uh, we could do that. I think we.
Staff, you guys can figure out the best avenue to get.
We would, uh.
I mean, we've kind of talked about where we're looking. Bring, bring us an idea. Bring us an idea next week.
All good.
All right.
Do you still need to make a motion to.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, oh, right, I'll make a motion to approve paying the remainder of the highway bill.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the highway bills, any other discussion then? Roll call.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Britt?
Aye.
Lypon?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
That's it, Kevin?
That's it.
Okay. Triple on interviews, let's try some new business, huh? Want to make the library board?
Is that on?
We got it out, huh?
Yeah, if everyone's back on, I'll, uh, make a motion to reappoint.
Second.
A motion and a second, all fairs say aye?
Aye.
All fold, motion carries. Airport board. Mr. Kippon's back on?
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay.
That's an interesting, uh, board, yeah, a few part of. I'll make a motion to reappoint the bishop, second.
A motion and a second, all fairs say aye?
Aye.
All fold, motion carries. Site authorization. Whether it be legal up there or not.
As far as we know.
Okay. We have a motion on the site authorization. Fire department, roll call. Good.
Hold up, group.
You have a motion and a second?
Second.
And a second? Any other questions, discussion? All fairs say aye?
Aye.
All fold, motion carries. All fold, motion carries. You a letter from Rolet County. Rhonda, what do you have on?
Okay, um, good morning. We received a request from, your, your commission received a request from Rolet County Commission to formally join in, to formally join in to talk regarding forming a zone. We all know there's been about four years of redesigning social services, and incrementally, incrementally, the state has taken on, um, funding of social services, and it, you know, um, funding from the various commissions and counties across the state has varied from eight mills to forty-five mills, we've been as high as thirty-seven. So this is a step in property tax, um, reduction, but more importantly, it's about equalizing services across the state, so what's available in Rolet County, what's available in Ramsey County, and Cass County is also available in Dunn County and Rolet County, so for me, that's kind of a focal point. We've, that's not always been the case because of the, um, different ways that counties have been run, so in that, um, along those lines, we had a meeting June eleventh, and we were, um, encouraged to form a zone. Rolet County really, um, as you all know, wanted to stand on their own, they felt like they had the population and the caseload to do that. The Department of Human Services thought otherwise, they did a tour of the upper three counties, um, the DHS, Terry Trainer from Association of Counties, a fiscal person, Laurel Singh, and a, um, HR person, Marcy Wuchik, um, went to, oh, and also Lucas Gamar, he's a business, um, analyst for DHS, went to Cavalier, Pembina, and Walsh County and visited with them, then went to, um, Rolet, visited with the Rolet County Commission, Rolet County Commission made a pitch, along with our social service director, to be their own zone, they were encouraged to ask Ramsey County to join our zone. There probably are a lot of reasons, uh, every county in, not everybody, about forty-three counties in the state of North Dakota have an administrator, uh, administrative staff officer, who really have the own administration, so this is one attempt, or, uh, a step in the process to lower administrative costs and get the money to services for children and elderly and disabled folks where they belong, and not stuck in admin costs. So, um, they encouraged them to, um, form with either Botno, Walsh, or, um, Pierce, they chose to send a letter to our commission. So I guess I'm here today to just explain that, um, we, um, Chair Brown and I had a long conversation about this, um, I think that we could start the talks and see where they go, they, um, are interest, they were, I don't know if you wanna say push, but encouraged to join a zone, they wanted to stand on their own. The law, twenty, Senate Bill twenty-one, twenty-four, um, indicates nineteen zones, um, with them, it would be twenty, um, if they stood on their own, so that's kind of where we're at, I'm hopeful that we can, um, we have a tentative date set, the twenty-first of August, if, if you vote to, um, join in some, um, a work group and discussions with, forming a zone with Rolet County. Um, I'm hopeful that we can do that to, just to see where we're at, to try to reduce some of the administrative costs, Candy's been, um, great help with, helping with Val, the, um, the auditor Val McLeod from Rolet County, she and Candy have a good grasp about the indirect costs and how the funding will flow, so I feel really good about that foundation, um, so I'm hopeful, and I'm, um, I'm hoping that you'll vote to at least join in, a work group discussion about forming a zone. The first agreement has been put out, I know, it was sent to all commissioners via email, I don't know if anyone had a chance to kind of glance at it, from Terry Trainer and DHS, and there's also a link on there for the agreement, so the, or, excuse me, for the plan, the plan isn't due until June of twenty-twenty, but the agreement is due in December of twenty-nineteen. December first, yeah, so that's where we're at, um, so. Do you have any questions?
Rhonda, um, so if, if they were to join the zone, would it, it would be three counties then? Or is, is Towner, what's Towner doing?
Well, Towner, we, we have formed a district for a long time, since about two thousand, we've been a district for a long time, since about two thousand twelve, so we're really considered as one, we've joined our, our finances for a long, long time, so it would be Towner, Ramsey, Benson, and, um, Rolet. So I should back up, uh, we started to form a zone, or a zone with Benson County, had two work group meetings, went to the June eleventh meeting, and we're, we're told like in front of, um, God and everyone at that June eleventh meeting, that we should put it on hold and wait until everybody in the state has joined a zone. So that was a little bit, I, we would have been, I'm, I guess I won't go into what would have happened, but I think we would have been finished with our zone at that point, or at this point now, um, but. So we were encouraged to wait and see what happened with Rolet County, in my opinion, although that wasn't specifically voiced, but we needed to wait till everyone had picked a, place to join a zone, so it would be a pretty large geographic area, although you obviously would have, um, managers or, you know, the way they've set up the pilots, at least the two pilots that I'm aware of, um, it's purely administrative, so already in a pilot for child protective services, there's a, another supervisor for those seven, for our seven counties in the pilot for doing child protective services, and that has gone very, very, very well. In January, there will be a, a group of, we will be having home and community-based services, um, they will go to state employment, and also our childcare licenser will go to state employment, so I think there are plans for administratively, so it won't be the traditional, when you think of, the director of a county social service agency supervising, I have twenty-six employees, um, it won't be exactly that model, the administrative model will be, I'm guessing my job will, um, at first, I'm hopeful to be appointed the interim, um, director, I'll just say that, um, I will have to apply for a job, which I think will happen January, February, March, depending on how that all goes down, they haven't written the job description yet, so I think there's a lot of changes. I think that I, there would be a place for me to work in other areas, too, so I'm not, I think the, the, the main goal for me right now is for citizens to have services, and I, I really have bought into the idea, I have to tell you, to quote someone else, I drank the Kool-Aid, we spend a lot of money on administrative costs, every county has a director, and maybe they have four employees, or two employees, and they pay a director, so the administrative costs are huge. So I think this is really an attempt, also an attempt to deal with auditors that have a system that the Department of Human Services, just putting that out there, knows that they have, um, they know how they do business, they've looked at, um, checks, they've, you know, the, the system that we have in place for the distribution of money has been looked at, and we do a good job, so that's kind of some of the other things that they're looking at, so that DHS, the Department of Human Services, deals with nineteen auditors instead of forty-eight or fifty-two, and so that's, again, I'm going all over the place, I'm really tired this morning, and we had a meeting late last night, but, um, it's an administrative model that will cut down on administrative costs, again, the bottom line is, which I'm really, um, invested in, is getting services back to people, instead of having five people administering four people, it's, it's, I pick on Dunn County, I have no idea what their numbers are, but, you know, when you look at, someone in Dunn County gets paid the same amount of money as an eligibility worker in Ramsey County, we run about, if you were gonna break it down, cases per worker, two-hundred-and-fifty, and I honestly, just picking on Dunn County, I won't even say Dunn, but another smaller county might do forty. So we're looking at really spreading all of the workload across the state of North Dakota, the way it makes sense, and there's a, we, we've worked with a consultant, um, using the theory of constraints, which is an industrial model, really looking at systems and processes, instead of case management, I own seven cases and these are mine, we look at processes, um, I, I'm just really impressed with this, model of administration, and I'm hopeful that we can make this work, so I'll be quiet and rant a little bit, um. Yeah, I don't know if that answered your question, cause you're.
Well, you're, you're passionate about the topics.
I am.
Uh, I, I'm, I move that we, uh, we do set up a working group to discuss with Rolet, what that might look like.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
A little second.
Second. Adam, I wanna ask you what you think.
Well.
You've been the closest to this situation.
Yeah, I, I mean, I guess I'm from the aspect of, I, I look at it from a couple different ways. There's value in the model that they're pushing forward, because if you look at, at the pilots and the, and the modeling of how things is, are working, there's a reason why they're trying to go to a standardized system. Uh, I, I believe at that June eleventh meeting, they were talking about, um, child welfare cases, and how quick they could turn around. You would think a child welfare case would be something you'd wanna get flipped around fairly quickly, as long as it doesn't work correctly. In some places in the state, they can do it in twenty days, in other places, there were cases that were ninety or a hundred days out. So if, if you happen to live in one place versus the other, your services are nowhere near the same because of workload, because of many varying factors, well, in the pilot, what they did was they put all the work into it, and then they, they, they figured out, I think there were like seven counties in the pilot, all seven counties did a child welfare case completely differently. And they found that if you standardize the process straight, get out, they were, they were hitting their ninety-five percent goal within sixty days, within three or four months of doing this project. So there's value in the project, I, I think they're, but, and, and the, the thing that I, I guess I go back to on this whole, what's gonna happen if you're anti-county versus Rolet, is there's a reason they're coming to us. They see value in the staff we have, in the backbone we have, and how we do things, you know, uh, so there's a reason why they're approaching us, and why DHS is saying, go talk to Ramsey County. So that's a good thing, the thing that it comes down to is how can we make it so it works for all of us, that, uh, we have a functioning board that works well together. And I think that the overriding thing in the, in the end is DHS has veto power, we don't, so we're gonna have to play. It just comes down to that. Well, I mean, I mean, I mean, we at least have to have the discussions, we at least have to sit down in the room and talk to one another and see where they're at. And ma- maybe it'll go far better than we anticipated. We don't know what's gonna happen yet, but we at least have to sit down and have the discussion, because if we don't get it started now, December first is right around the corner, and then our options at that point will be null and void, and we'll be told what we're doing. So I think there's value in sitting down, uh, between us, Benson, Towner, Rolet, everybody getting in the same room, talking it out, and seeing where we're at. Doesn't necessarily commit us to anything, but have a discussion. Words never hurt anyone, words can't hurt people, but in this situation, we don't get hurt anymore, we're just gonna see what we're, we can kind of figure out how to get along. That's where I'm at, and all along with you.
Okay. Any other thoughts from the commission?
What are your thoughts?
Oh, I'm kind of up in the air, and kind of went back and forth, I talked to Candy quite a bit about it, I talked to Rhonda a lot. I was probably adamant at the beginning against it, but, uh, I wanna sit down with them, and I told Rhonda I wanna be there, I wanna get a feel on how receptive they are to this idea. You know, if there's hesitation on anybody's part, I think we're gonna have to, um, you know, let the state know, or somebody know that, you know, we need to relook this. When I was at the state fair, I talked to the county treasurer from Slope County, and three counties down there are pulling out of that makeup one, they're setting up. And what they told me, it sounded, the slope, bone and head, I think, we're gonna work together, instead of, what, they got eight or nine in that one? Quite a few, wasn't there?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it was.
I hadn't heard that.
They didn't wanna, they didn't want us to have. And I asked, asked her, I said, I've known her quite a while, along, quite a few years, and she, I said, is the state alright with this, the human services, you know? Yeah, she said, sure, that's what I'm going by, but, going back to this, I, yeah, let's sit down, let's, let's have a meeting with them and see how receptive they are, and Candy seems to be alright with it, talked to her about some of it, the administering, and the money, and how to, how everything, so, I think, I think just they would be very helpful, and, you know, with the auditors to get things done. Page, but, yeah, I think we're alright, so let's, let's have a look, let's have a look, anyway.
I agree, from the staff point of, if, if there's hesitation from their perspective, that they, they're gonna be dragged in as kicking and screaming, I mean, functionally, how it's gonna work.
Yeah.
We, we all have to be on the same page that we want this to work from base score one, we all wanna get in this together and make this happen in the correct way, and if that's not gonna happen, then we have to have discussions and see,
Yeah.
is it gonna function well? Because we, that's the main concern, is if we put it together, this, this, this should function the same or better than we're functioning now. And if it's not, that's a net loss for us.
Yeah.
It just is. So we need to make sure that it's going to be functioning as well, that it's better than it is today, just that simple.
I don't, well, two of the counties that are involved, you know, Towner and Benson are involved in the law enforcement center, I've been involved there in Marquette, too, and, you know, relatively goes along pretty well, I feel, with the other counties there, you know, like, they seem to be happy, and I think we can probably get this to that point, too, also, it'll probably take some time, but, uh, I know it's a little bit harder to get involved with the center, as far as employees, as far as money involved, as far as cases, I mean, this is, there'll be a lot of zones looking at how we do this, you know, how we work together. Maybe I'm warming up a little bit for Rolet County's meeting, but, you know, we're gonna have to get together and have a common goal of making it work.
Yeah, definitely, but we're kind of a maker of our own problem in this.
Right.
Because, because when, when places like Ramsey and Towner went together to make services more efficient, the state saw, hey, this can be done, and we can save money, and, and everybody gets quality services, so we should, we kind of created a model, that the lieutenant said, hey, we can do this.
You're right.
So we, we kind of created our own model to, but at the same point, it's not a bad thing, if we can all work together, and start it score one, that we're gonna work together, but that's what it always comes down to. Is can, can you have, you know, people that are gonna, willing to work towards the same goal, even at the times you're not gonna necessarily agree on it?
Oh, Towner County's been a good part.
Yeah, Towner's been great, I know, we've never had anything but, but good working relationship, the only thing that, that is concerning to a point is indirect costs, and how are those things gonna be handled if, under the assumption, we would wanna be the host county, obviously, uh, and if that's the case, then how are those indirect costs going to be? You know, is there gonna be enough of a, of a, reimbursement rate for the state to cover those indirect costs, and the additional work we're gonna be putting on, essentially mostly the auditors' eyes? Are we gonna need additional help if this occurs this way, or, and that's, that's not gonna be something we're gonna necessarily know until we get into it.
This is gonna be a one awful big district, I mean, I'll say that right away, I mean, there's no question that this, oof, you know, it's like taking, it's gonna be, what, the fifth largest district, the caseload, or maybe higher than that, huh?
Yeah, the fourth or the fifth, um, caseload-wise.
And it'll be us after the four big counties.
Right.
And it's like, you know, you take Grand Forks, you take Fargo, and, what are they, fifteen, ten, ten or fifteen miles in diameter, and Christ, we're gonna be two-hundred, you know?
Yeah.
You know, and, uh, it's gonna take some, it's gonna take more labor to run this one than theirs, probably. What do you think about that?
Yes and no, I think there's some efficiencies, when you look at cost per case for Rolet County and child welfare, they're running about three or four hundred dollars higher per case to administrate than we are, and, and, and higher than Cass is, but when you look at their EA caseload, they're very low, but then you look at, they only pay seventy percent of a insurance policy for their, their, their benefits are very low, which brings it down, so, uh, brings down their cost per case, so, um, it'll be interesting to see how, it's definitely going to be interesting to see how this plays out, um, we do have some commonalities between Benson and Ramsey County. We have, um, child welfare experience in Ramsey County that really helps us with Benson and Rolet County. I think that we've, um, made sure that our services have remained the same in Towner County, which is attractive, that they've, no services have changed in Towner County when we formed a district, where, um, and that's part of the ten, basic tenants of, um, you know, aggregating, the administrative part is keeping services the same in all the counties. So, yeah, it will be very interesting, we have a lot of similarities, um, more similarities than differences, it is a large land. It is a large landmass. I mean, it takes an hour and a half to drive to, wait, maybe not an hour, hour and twenty minutes, fifteen minutes to drive to Rolla.
Good help.
It's a good help.
I think the other thing too, that's gonna be interesting in, in, hopefully if we improve this and sit down and visit Rolet counties, where their mindset's gonna be in terms of, um, you know, because if we're the host county, they're gonna take on our benefit package. And it's not gonna cost them anything. The state's gonna cover the difference. But, it's gonna create, you know, a different wage scale as well as insurance package in the courthouse. And, uh, hopefully that, you know, they're, I've been thinking about that already, preparing for that. Uh, 'cause I, I can guarantee you, if they wanna be the host county, we're not gonna move back to their insurance policy, you know, like that, obviously. So, they're, hopefully they've got their mindset in that area that, that that's something that's gonna probably have to occur and, uh, and they're thinking about it at least.
Well, geographically speaking, that'd be stupid if they wanted to be the host county.
Not necessarily. We've got a higher base load than us. They're bigger than we are.
Well, right. But, think about it, if you have to go and provide services, I mean, you've got, what, almost two hours to get to the south side of Benson from?
No, I, geographically, I don't necessarily disagree with you. But, the problem is in, in, not just in, well, in this situation, not so much, but in, in some of the other situations, like for instance, Pembina, Cavalier, Walsh. Walsh has the largest population and also has the largest employee load when it comes to social services. But, in their combination, Cavalier has far better, has far better health insurance and, and pay scale. So, Cavalier is going to have to take on all of the employees, possibly, since it's looking like. So, it creates a concern when you have a small county like that, having to basically take on the staff load. Uh, you know, so it's, the, the thought process behind how this is all rolling out is not a bad thought process. The, the, the problem is, is that, I think, and granted, I don't have a crystal ball, but a few years out from now, we're gonna still have disparate responses in how people are getting health insurance from the employees to employ and those kind of things. And the state's gonna get complaints. And, and it's, it's gonna become, you know, interesting to see how they respond to those things in the next couple of sessions going forward. Because it's still gonna be the same problem of this county's paying this and this county's paying this. And, you know, it's not gonna be equal across all lines when it comes to wages and pay scale and things like. Well, pay scale's, you know, pretty similar, generally, not always. Because Rolet County is, you know, is lower than us comparatively.
Right. I think, I, I'm concerned about that also. I'm concerned about, um, county commissioners, especially our commissioners have been very responsive to the labor shortage and paying folks to, to get them here. We have two, two child welfare openings again in our unit. Um, it's very difficult to attract, um, young, I'm, I'm sorry, but it's very difficult to attract young or old professionals to our, our, our city. We lack daycare, affordable housing. It's very difficult to buy a house in an affordable range if you're starting out at forty-two hundred and forty-four hundred dollars a month. And we're, we're, our pay scale is right in the ballpark. We do a really good job paying people. Um, the state of North Dakota, um, employees did not have a raise for three years. This will be their first raise in three years. So, we're a little worried when we look at, um, we look at the human service center not being very politically correct this morning and their ability to attract professionals to serve our community with their wa, with, with the wages that they pay. The, again, if you're closer in a community, and that's again where the board is going to be, we need a really good, strong zone board. For the zone board understands the community needs and can, um, advocate for paying people to get people here to do the work. Because that has not happened with the way the human service centers have been run, with the, you know, the community board where we come there and just bless what the director tells us is going on at the human service center. So, I'm sorry I said that, but that's kinda how I see the concern here with paying people to get people here to work. That's where our zone board's gonna be very, very important. So.
Well, it's, unfortunately, the nature of the beast is that most of the time in places where you have problems attracting professional employees, you probably have less money to pay those professional employees when you probably shouldn't be paying them more to attract them. So, it, it becomes a difficult situation in your people to show, show up and it's, yeah, yeah. It's, it's just gonna be kinda interesting to see how this all rolls out, uh, in the next few years. We'll see how it goes, I guess.
It's, it's also showed a glaring spotlight, and I promise I'll be quiet, on what communities and commissions have decided and how they've chosen to deal with social services in their community. Start everyone at the minimum and only move them ahead with the minimum three percent or two percent. When this, remember, we're on the state where you pay scale. So, when the state of North Dakota has moved their minimum pay scale for the grade L, which is a social worker, up two percent or one percent, that's all that counties have done. And you can see that in their ability to track, attract, um, workers. And so, I'm a little concerned about that, but I'm, I'm hopeful that we can, um, like I said, have a good, strong board to, to help folks understand that.
Yeah.
I think, not, not to step on the one last point that I just kinda talked about. My, my, the other thing I think that's really, really something that has to be hammered out when it comes to, you said a good, strong zone board, is that traditionally, at least in Ramsey County or Towner County, we have taken on outside projects that don't necessarily fall under anywhere else, but they're social services related, like attendant care and things like that, which aren't necessarily going, you know, that's kinda part of the rolling cost that the state's covering to a point, other than we pay the rent. But, things like that, where you see a community need, I hope we still have the, the flexibility to be proactive when we see things or at least not forwardly reactive and say, "Hey, this is something we can use." Uh, and, and having a good board that says, "Hey, Douglas Lake needs some help here, Rolla needs some help here, Candy needs some help here," and kinda divvying it out when it needs to happen. It's something that's gonna have to occur at that level. And that's where we have to hopefully get to the point where we're all on the same page. So, we'll see how that, you know.
Okay. Why'd you bring it up, Adam? What do you think, Rhonda? If Rolet County said, "Well, we don't want you to have a tenant care down there in Ramsey County," what, what are we gonna do then?
I mean, I, I can't, I think we'd have a very long discussion about.
Oh, the commission made it over?
Um, well, right now, if you really look at a tenant care, um, it's self-sustaining because.
I know. I'm, I'm all for it. I was all for it when we implemented.
Yeah.
And I'm still for it.
Well, it's essentially self-sustaining under the county right now, but social services kinda spearheaded getting their own.
Right.
And that's what I'm saying. It's kinda like duties as assigned. Hey, Rhonda's going to help out. Let's get it going, you know?
You know, like.
That's my point.
Um, I, I can't imagine we would, I, as a board, and the, yeah, I don't know how to answer that, except that I would talk real, maybe wear them down and talk real loud, real long, that not, we, that would not be a good move. I'm not sure. I just can't imagine.
To me, to me, the argument is, we have a tenant care and it works. Why wouldn't you want it?
Yeah.
Well, I know what you're saying.
And, and, and things like, I'm just, I think, you know, some of the stuff we've done in the last few years, we've done restorative justice work at the, at the middle school. I mean.
Yes.
That's something we shouldn't say, "Boy, you have it, you shouldn't have it." That's something we should say, "Let's expand this."
We should model it.
We should model it.
And outwards.
But, that, but that's the point where you have to have that board that says, "Yeah, that's valuable."
And, and going even more, looking forward, we should probably have a worker at the middle school that goes out and makes home visits to get, we have fifty kids that have still missed over twenty hour, twenty days of school. And so, we're gonna talk about that this afternoon, the new vice principal and, um, Mr. K for the principal and myself this afternoon about what we can do with those fifty kids who've still missed more than twenty days. We knew that, we know that not attending school on a regular basis is due to a lot of issues and also sets you up for failure as you go farther into the system. Also makes you more likely to be in the foster care system, more likely to be in the justice system. So, why not, why aren't we spending, expending some of those efforts? But, we just not had the latitude with our, our funding to do that. And we've been forward-thinking and done that with some private, you know, the, um, Douglas Lake youth activities has been really good to give us grant money to do that. So, I'm hopeful that those things will continue. And maybe expand to Rolet County.
I, I just, the reason I brought it up and asked the question was, you know, I wanna watch off for the best interest of Ramsey County. I mean, do you see any reason why this would jeopardize that, my thinking?
No, unless we learn something in this.
I should be aware, or?
Well, I, I don't think so.
Worded?
I think we would hear it in the work group, and I think that would be the flags that we would raise. I hope.
Those are the questions we're gonna have to ask them.
Yeah, that, the work group and the zone board, you know, that's gonna, how this goes is gonna depend on how that works.
Yeah. So, I'm hopeful with the work group. I think we'll see those red flags and then we can have that discussion.
Okay. Any other discussion? We, we got a motion in a second. Oh, there's a hi.
Hi.
Oh, oh, there's a carry. Did you want to talk about the setup for the work group, the social service zone? Nope. You wanna bring that up, Rhonda? It's on our agenda. What, do you wanna do that?
Um, how, yeah, I guess how do we wanna develop a work group, is the question. Is Rolet had?
Two commissioners.
Two commissioners? And, and the worker, we had set up with Benson, we had two social service board members from each board between us and Benson.
Um, actually, Doris Griffin is not on the social service board. She is a commissioner.
Yeah, so they, but to appoint DHS, you said?
Right, right.
From DHS side. So, do we wanna, do we wanna ask Benson or, you know, kinda tell him what's, I mean, we're gonna have, are you in communication with Benson so they know what's going on?
I was kinda waiting to, to, to see what was decided today before I sent out an email. We could offer that they could send another person. I'm not sure they would see the value in forming such a large work group. I believe that Rolet County put two people on the work group, not knowing what our makeup was. I'm not sure. I think maybe, maybe when, after the meeting, one or two would drop off. I'm not sure. Because I don't see the, but, but maybe we'll, I, I guess I would look for direction from the commission. Should we open it up that people can send one more? Work groups tend to be pretty cumbersome with fifteen, eighteen people, but I, we could surely do that.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Two per county gets you to eight.
I think that's a good idea because this is probably a little more than a work group.
Okay.
I mean, this is gonna be a feel-on session.
Okay.
You know?
So, I can send an e-
I think.
Okay, I could send an email asking Benson and Towner County if they would, would want to appoint another person to come to represent their interests at this first meeting. We're kind of looking at the twenty-first of August. I know it's right in the middle of harvest, um, or maybe the start of harvest. I'm not sure.
It's gonna be the middle.
Is it gonna be the middle?
Hopefully, the party's gonna go in here.
What time are you shooting for?
And that, that date is also negotiable. I can have a conversation with.
What time are you thinking?
We were thinking early in the afternoon to get done, five-thirty, but that's also negotiable. It was, um, surprising to Rolet County that we met in the evening. They have day meetings. But, I said.
They have their meetings at five-thirty? Is that what you said?
No, they have their meetings at nine in the morning.
Okay.
The director, the Rolet County director was surprised that we met at night, but understood that.
Twenty-first, that's gotta be, uh?
It's a Wednesday?
A law enforcement day?
If, if the commission were to get this done, is that like a nine o'clock meeting?
Law enforcement meeting that morning.
At nine o'clock on the twenty-first?
Eight.
Eight? What if we get ten or eleven or a one that day? Just really keep you going in for the.
After we let her on the radio, it was smart. You better back it up a little more. I don't know.
We could go to the next week.
I got a feeling.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at Candy because of the. Um.
I guess we're under the assumption here that, uh, obviously you'd like to be on the work group.
I'd like to be there.
And I, I would like to continue if that's okay with the commissioner. So, I mean, to me, put it whatever day works, you know, figure it out, I guess.
You wanna go to the twenty-first? That's at law enforcement center.
That's a rough date, so.
We could be, we could go to the twenty-second, maybe?
The twenty-second is Tuesday?
Thursday.
Thursday. Um, sure. I, I, that week is good for me, the twenty-second, if we wanna do a nine AM Thursday morning, the twenty-second.
Yeah, that would be good. Uh, that's fine. That's a good time, uh, depending on where we wanna meet after, like, we wanna meet in the middle?
Um, Candy? Is that kinda in the middle? Um.
How about here? You're kinda comfortable there.
I can, I can broach that.
Yeah, I mean, I prefer to be here, people, but if, if, if they wanna meet in the middle, we can do that.
Just get used to it.
Okay. So.
And, and to add to that, I mean, just remember, I think, in the, should've gone last time, you guys said, we're negotiating for one position of strength. I mean, we've, uh, just, our, our guts are all.
So, so does that mean we would go to Candy or does that mean we would?
See, see if, see if they'll come here.
We'll go there.
Okay.
In this room. I would better set up the basement.
Yeah, we would go basement. Don't be here above, sir. We need some space for it.
I would do the probably small meeting room, maybe?
Yeah, that's fine.
And I'll let Benson, I think Benson County's meeting this morning too, their commission, so they may appoint someone else, but they have another meeting before that, the Tuesday before that. So, we should be good. So, I'll probably look to a, sending out a, a meeting, a, a notice with Candy. Another auditor was going to come, but she's been really involved in their budget. And, and me, Rolet County's auditor has gone, it sounded to be like, did their budget? Would that be a fair assumption from that meeting? Maybe not. We had one meeting where we all met together to try.
Pretty involved in that, but not necessarily doing their budget.
She, she gets it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you want the auditors there too, right?
If, if they would like to come. I know that, um, Candy and Bonnie and that, or Joni Morlock did, did not think they needed to be part of that meeting. However, Val McLeod was coming to the meeting. She, in your letter that you received, she indicated she would like to be a part of that group. I'm wondering if after the first couple of meetings, that would.
We should have Candy there.
Well, if, if it's here, you just have to go to basement.
Candy's like that.
Yeah, um, I think that would be scheduled somewhere.
Some, somewhere around all the other states, you gotta get that.
Well, we're over the first day of school, so it should be. Yeah, I didn't realize.
Yeah, for the twenty-first, is it?
Yeah.
It's coming up quick.
Yeah. I'm kinda on the downside of that. That will be the first day of the last year.
Really?
Louis is a senior, so, um, I forgot. I was thinking it was the twenty-second.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first, yeah. So, thank you.
Anything else on this?
Do we need to make a motion to appoint the two of you for that work group?
Good idea.
How would you go ahead and make that motion that Commissioner Brown and Commissioner Whitebourn represent Ramsey County on that working group to?
A second. Get a second? Should we wait for Lucas? Lucas won dollars, yes. Oh, there's a hi.
Hi.
Oh, there's a motion, Carrie. Thank you, Rhonda. Thanks for all the help on this.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. It's been a long, I mean, starting out with, um, twenty-one, twenty-six, four years ago, and then twenty-one, twenty-four. It's been a lot of changes, but, um.
Twenty-two oh six.
Is it twenty-two oh six?
That was a big, that was a big change.
I, I, I think that's a large part of why we know what we're talking about is because you know what you're talking about.
Right.
How much help are we supposed to?
Keep us, uh.
Keep, keep us in, in the know?
I, I appreciate linear brains because I tend to talk in circles, so people kinda go, "What?" But, I, I am pretty passionate about this. I think it's a good plan. It's a good model. I think if we can really focus on keeping services where they belong with people and not getting so heavy on administrative. I mean, when you look at our counties and how admin, our county social service agencies, how top-heavy they are with administration, it's not, and so this is really a, a tough time to get a handle on that.
Gotcha. It'll be a process. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move into the, uh, twenty-twenty preliminary budget. Candy?
Is that? I guess I'll start with where things sit and cross.
Nice, so.
Finally, got it.
You got a nasty term here.
Yeah, sorry. Twenty point seven increase.
Percent?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
That's crazy.
And.
Twenty?
Yeah. And how, how that is, how that is derived is, the explanation that I was given is due to, um, claims, you know, claims.
You know, claims that have been submitted. Is, is how they.
To this self-funded plan? They're signaling this out?
No, that's how it is, just everybody, how, how they go off of, you know.
You think this is pretty much statewide, twenty percent?
Um, what was, what's, Jeff, what's yours?
And, and, and these hers went out, uh, I think it was eighteen percent, uh.
Yeah.
It was, it was a big increase, but that was a, you know, they do that every two years, um, for the biennium, so that price will be good through, you know, for the next two years for.
Lucky us.
And I think that's just about eighteen hundred dollars for a family, a family policy per month. So, big increase, it wouldn't, from, you know, it was over two hundred and, just about a two hundred and fifty dollar increase per month. For that, any hers.
So, how this sheet is laid out then? Am I looking at this correctly? Even after a twenty percent increase, they're still projected at a shortfall compared to what they're gonna take in? Or what we're gonna be charging, something like that?
Well, we, we have, we have that cushion that.
Carryover.
That, that we've built over several, several years.
Yeah, cause if we get above whatever the total revenue that we send into them, it just costs us over the top the revenue, we, we're gonna do it, right?
And this, this is figuring in, taking on.
This is, yeah, this is, the state's gonna cover that.
No, but in order to, like, I got two, two sets of papers, the ne, the numbers didn't change on either.
Yeah, that was gonna be.
On either set, whether we went with the sixty, sixty-nine employees or we went with a hundred and three. We're still at a twenty-two percent increase.
We're still at twenty-five seven, okay. That, that was gonna be my question was, is, are, are, is our increase higher because of more employees?
It's still in the sense, it's a hundred, a hundred and. No.
What's the risk pool anyway?
It is, it is based on, like, they explained to me how it works, is it is based on the claims that are submitted.
Oh. So, we have.
And we had.
We have one point one million dollars worth of claims submitted?
No, that's what I.
That's the estimate.
That's the estimate going forward, like, um, for eighteen, we had almost seven hundred thousand. Yeah. I can, I contributed to that hot.
What's this, what does the city have, have, have a nature of?
Um.
What percentage do they, do they know?
Like, they, we.
I know, I know, they, they see that at least they're paying a percentage or they pay a dollar.
City they're winning.
They, they don't pay a full.
I mean, it's, it's, you know, something to think about before you find a budget.
The only, the only thing that's sort of worrying, right, is if we're burning through this carryover money. You know, you're setting yourself up for, in a couple of years, uh, eating another ten percent increase, not even withstanding whatever the, you know, whatever it's adjusted to, due to regular price increases. You know, to, because in order, in order to be neutral as far as revenues and expenses, that's, that's another eleven percent higher. The only reason it's not eleven percent higher is because we're burning through two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of carryover.
Yeah, well, then that's under the assumption of one point one million in claims, so hopefully, we come in at eight hundred thousand and then don't, we're neutral at that point.
Right.
Seven. Like, we get back to sa, have seven again like you had, and then, don't. I don't know.
You know, but with taking on, you know, if, if, I mean, if that's, I mean, I have to, I have to look at it, I have to look at it.
Yeah, that's a good point, cause we're putting another thirty people on, there's gonna be more claims.
You know, and that's why I put one point one million, because we, we kind of averaged it out per employee. And that's how I come up with the one point one million, I mean, you know, somebody could have zero and the next person could have, you know.
Looks to me like we need to build in like a monthly stretching program and maybe have some, I don't know, something to help.
Yeah.
Exercise.
Will we participate in that?
Yeah, we have to check that.
Don't they have the one, one, or their wellness program, or is that something that just burst us?
No, with it, that, we have that.
Oh, does, does they give a one percent decrease if you participate and you have to meet so many required and that?
Yeah. Yeah, you have to twelve times a month.
Yeah, but, yeah, and then they pay for a part-year, part-year.
Uh, no, that changed, that changed now, um, you have to go on the Blue Cross Blue Shield portal, um, set up a wellness. You done that? Uh, yeah, yeah. You have to go like that. I'm like, it's difficult. What it, what it, what is, what was it called, you have to do like a wellness.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not anybody that needs to do wellness.
Wellness analysis or a wellness. Right. Something they, I mean, they ask you, like, just absurd questions, I mean, it's.
So.
More hooks to jump there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, bottom line, I guess the question is, what did we levy last year for health insurance for the, for the cost, and what are we levying this year, twenty percent more? Plus the cost of the additional employees?
Well, but, no, but those, this is just what would come out of my budget, that's, I didn't figure in. They, like, the additional, this is just to cover.
Okay.
Right, that's what we're concerned about, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you've got, you've got, you've got all the employees paid for and their claims and stuff, though, so, that's total, total cost.
Yeah. And last, last year. But the money, but the money comes, but the money.
Yeah, we're gonna, yeah, part of this dollar figure is gonna be reimbursed back, yes, but I'm just saying, this is what we have to cover before the reimbursement shows up in it, basically.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and that's at five hundred and fifteen thousand.
We levy health insurance under the general rate.
Yeah.
Five fifteen you sent in, you gotta send down now.
Yeah, and last year was, or this year, it was four fifty-five.
Why? That's not even.
Twenty percent, oh, geez.
So. Self-funded, that's always kind of an interesting thing, it's completely different, so, and if you're after, how it works again, so, uh, to, just refresh me exactly on what we're paying them then, so I wrapped my head around it again. So, we paid the five fifteen?
Yes.
Okay? And then, when a claim occurs, how does the claim get run then?
That would go through. What? I don't know. I was trying to prepare myself, if I knew. Um, there is another Blue Cross account where claims, administrative, all of that stuff goes through.
Yeah.
Then there is another account where money goes back into. So, it's just. It's more or less, it's more or less a circle and the carryover.
Yeah, well, yeah, cause we end up paying basically the, the, the monthly costs, so that two point three million, we have to pay plus the five fifteen, plus the net revenues, is what we end up paying.
Yeah.
And then the whole point of that five fifteen is that's, that's like a claim offset, basically.
And I maybe, and I maybe should have. And I maybe should have broke it down, like, what, what would be our portion of that eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand and what would be social service, I maybe should have. Broke it down. Yeah. Yeah, because theirs, theirs would be like three, you know. Almost three hundred thousand. Let me back into your budget. Mm-hmm.
Does Rolet County, Rhonda, have a fully paid family plan? No, what are they doing?
They pay seventy percent of a, seventy percent of a family.
Single.
And seventy percent of single. That's what the pay, the paper says that I have from the June eleventh meeting, however, when I listened to their commission meeting, it sounded like they only pay seventy percent of a single, it's both. The other thing is they encourage folks to not take that and to use Indian Health Services, which is. Suspect. I mean, I, I don't know how you do that. That was openly talked about in the meeting. So, I'm guessing every one of those employees would take one or the other, right? Is that what you figured for the cost? Just like. Well, we, we, we took it just with them taking what.
You gotta consider that.
Whether they pay or not. A family, you figured the higher rate, the family rate? No, that was, like, I got a breakdown of what. From them? Yeah, from this county. Okay. And I had to send that to Blue Cross before I got figures.
Thank you.
Do you have, do you have her twenty nineteen costs on what monthly, what the monthly costs were for each type of thing?
And it's.
It's just twenty percent less of whatever's there? Twenty seventeen? So, basically, it's twenty percent of two point three, and then another sixteen thousand or something like that?
So, the fam, family plan over cost six hundred and ninety-four dollars last year?
Family plan last year.
Well, that's, that's the expense side, that's not the actual cost of.
Oh, sorry, yeah, it's, it's.
About seventeen, eighteen?
Twenty, so, seventy-nine point seven percent of.
You're right.
Twenty-three hundred.
So, seven hundred.
Eighteen twenty-four fifty-two last year, the family.
Oh, yeah, so, single is put in seven hundred, so it's kind of a hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Yeah. Last year was. So, are you looking at the t, the top figure or the bottom figure?
Bottom, the bottom, the revenues.
Okay, cause the bottom figure is suggested of, of, from Blue Cross of what we should, like, charge out. The top figure is.
What it costs.
What we actually pay.
What figure do you use and not tell them?
No. Okay, so the top figure is what we actually will be paying to Blue Cross.
The monthly one?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, the bottom figures are what they are suggesting for us to charge out to, to the different departments. To cover our costs.
Oh, okay, I get what you're looking at.
Do it, do other stuff, like, you know, so, like, for a single, for a single, last year, it was two hundred and eighty dollars.
Do we, we charge it, we pay it right now?
So, now it's three hundred and thirty-eight.
The bottom is, we just, we just. Yeah, so what you're saying is, like, for instance, on the family plan right now.
Yeah.
Projected, Blue Cross is suggesting that we set aside twenty-three hundred dollars and seventy-nine cents per month, per person on the family plan. So, then that'll, that will cover what we pay them, Blue Cross, per month, plus it will build in enough money to cover claims during the, during the year, basically. So, the actual plans only cost us eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars, then that, plus the, the total of that five fifteen we send in, and then claims over the top. But that twenty-three hundred is a projection that gets to that point then.
And last year, we put it at seventeen fifty, seventeen fifty-one.
Yeah. So, actual incurred costs.
This is last year.
Yeah, and the thing is, is this is all skewed to a point because we got a hundred and three versus seventy employees taken, but it's still.
Everybody can't look at this middle. You have to look at this top, this top figure in this bottom.
Cost. Cost more, that's all I know.
Well, so. Okay, how are they coming up with this twenty point seven percent increase then? Uh, I mean, if you don't use that twenty-three, uh, I don't know how they're doing it.
Well, it's just.
You mean, last year's at two eighty, and this year, uh, single at three thirty-eight.
But, but.
I don't have a twenty.
But your claim, your claims were only, you know.
I know, but here we got.
Claims were only.
That's, that's seventeen point two, that was.
Yeah, yeah.
So, basically, what they're doing is charging us twenty percent more on that monthly fee upfront, and then they're requiring us to put more money sent in upfront on that five, on, is that five fifteen used to be four something?
Four fifty, I, what you did, like, four fifty-five.
So. How, how long is this carryover, I mean, is it actually helping the account?
Yeah. Yeah, it's seven twenty-seven this year, it's eight, seventeen.
Cause we go back in where it stays.
Where you get there.
Right, and then, then the next question is, is, does it accrue any, any interest at all?
Seventeen point two.
No, it doesn't. So, really, then, it, it's actually really not a good idea for the county to, to overpay because the money gets sent into a vacuum, it doesn't ever accrue any interest at all.
Like, any money needs to be.
You're talking about the five. You're talking about the five fifteen?
No, I'm talking about the, the eight fifty, the carryover, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we, that is sitting in an account somewhere.
Eight fifty-nine, you're talking about.
No, we have the five, eight.
The eight fifty, that's the carryover. Well, and that's, that's from years of luckily running under, running under budget when we budgeted.
That's, that's from. Years.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not sitting here arguing, I'm not sitting here arguing that we should, you know, draw it all the way down or anything, I'm just, I'm just saying that, that it, it, it doesn't behoove us to, to build it to much more than, you know, a year or two of high claims. For the simple reason that it doesn't, it doesn't do anything there for us.
It's a cushion.
True, right.
Right. Well, like I said, I mean.
Safety, yeah.
A, a year or two, I think, is reasonable, but I'm just.
But see, now, in the case of, of.
Well, no, about nineteen percent here.
You know, us adding an additional, you know, forty-some employees.
That's actually higher.
I don't know what it's gonna do to that carryover. You know?
What, you say a couple of years of it?
No, as, like I said, you know, with, if, that's the route that we're, I mean, that's my mindset is, you know, taking on an additional employees, adding them to our plan, you know. What is that gonna do?
True, you're gonna.
To that carryover.
Sure.
You know?
Should be.
Yeah, but it's all based, it's, you know, it's based on claims. You know, so if there's.
Lot of chance you take.
Right, right, but that's why I put the claims at like one point one million, because.
You're, that is.
Yeah.
We kind of averaged it out, how much it would be per employee for a whole year, and it was like ten thousand, ten thousand something.
For the insurance board.
Okay, well, let's move on in this budget.
So.
Or try to get done by then.
Yeah, so, the, the, the valuable, the, the middle stuff you got in front of us here, is that including this Blue Cross increase? So, it is, so we can eat the increase and still have to be up at this point, six point eight percent, six point seven. It's not actually horrible. The one thing I was gonna ask, um, was how much money, and I, I couldn't find my pageant, I must have lost it, how much money on this one, these general did we put in, uh, for the shelter, uh, ten thousand in it? Cause they had asked us to, not, not safe, the, the homeless shelter, cause they had asked us for, they did a pass.
I think that was ten thousand.
Cause I don't know, cause I got an email from, from Karen Nick from the shelter, and I think they were, they were asking for a slight bit more, just cause the operational costs, like everybody else is going up.
Yeah, that's a nice team.
Sure, yeah, I couldn't find my pageant name or.
Yeah. Yeah, and ten thousand for Lake Region Community Shelter.
Uh. Yeah, I thought she had sent you this email, and then I just realized that she didn't. Cause they're looking, they're, they're looking to put on just a part-time staff member to, to run, to, yeah, for those. So, the, from the ten thousand, they were asking if they could go to maybe fifteen, fifteen to seventeen.
And we gave one last year.
Ten, we gave last year. But they, they're asking if they could go to fif, between fifteen and seventeen, cause they put on just a, a part-time staff, who's gonna cost them a little thirteen thousand, and, and, and being able to pay somebody to come in and handle it.
What does the city giving them?
I don't know, that's a, it's a good question. I, I couldn't tell you that answer.
Did you have a meeting last night, Marc?
No.
I heard on the radio this morning, they, uh, cut. They didn't approve the full LEC project on.
I got the agreement, but.
I heard that too.
I haven't heard nothing.
I just figured I would bring this up now, since we can't, I mean, we could buffer it in the general, but bring it up at the time, go to now, so we can stay in the, can't ruin it here.
The.
That, that actually, homeless shelter, yeah, because I, I thought she, I thought she would have been CC'd on this email, and she had it, so then I think she just sent it to me, so that's my, I missed it. And she says, but they'll continue to seek other sources of income and grants, and it's trying cash work, that can basically keep the pledge rolling.
Well. What other thoughts you have on this?
Well. Not that it's a great survey or anything, but I've been using the recycle a lot since our last meeting. And I've asked everybody there, I have never, in probably fifteen to twenty trips, I have not come across one. Out of the city limits using that recycle. So I'd like to take, we voted last time, we gave them ten thousand, they won, we were giving them five, we went to ten, I'd like to resend that back to, to five thousand. I've been there, I've probably talked to thirty people, not one of them were from. Out of the count, out of the city limits. I just don't see, and I, and I truly don't see that, you know, you're, Adam's mowing his grass and mowing it to town, I mean, just, I have a real problem with that.
My grass is lucky for it's mowed.
Then you make out of liquid, they burn their branches. And I just have a really hard time buying that.
I, I'm fine with chipping in, because I think it's valuable that we should, you know, like I said, with boxes and everything that are happening.
Yeah, yeah, I.
I, I think staying at the five thousand isn't unreasonable.
I, I think we need to make, make it, make it known until a common residence.
Well, and that's the other thing, is when you hear an advertisement, it's never said, it's never, ever said.
Oh, maybe all who take is talking, uh, maybe in a restaurant, coffee time, where, remember, you can, you can use it for. Oh, business is one of those self fulfilling things, if we tell everybody to use it, they'll all use it, and then one fifteen, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Which is the bad thing, this is really a people are using it, but it raises the gas, so.
You know, when I know the small towns, the bars with the cardboard, I know they're burning it all.
Which is a shame, we should put it in the constitution, it's like.
Six to one half, seven to the other.
Did we have five last year or ten?
Five.
Five.
They asked us to go to ten, we stuck in just on.
They, they've asked us for ten for the last. Two or three years.
Been five or ten?
Ten.
They asked for ten, we did five.
I don't know where the.
We can broker a deal here, then, I'll, I'm willing to go along and go down to the five, if we can tack a little bit on for the homeless shelter. I'm over, can you motion take the five down and roll it over to the homeless shelter? And then, and it puts us in a place, it doesn't matter, it's all in the general, but.
Yeah, yeah, I'm fine with that.
It'll put us in a place, at least we can broker from, we can work from it that way.
We don't know the state, what the city's throwing in that shelter.
No, and I think it's something we should talk to them about, obviously, because they should have some, they should have some skin to be given, because it's, it's valuable, and the one thing I would say is. They essentially got that place off the ground completely volunteer without. Only funded from anybody other than grants, so the amount, keeping place rolling, I think is pretty reasonable. It's, it's used, so I think it's valuable to have, I mean, fifteen grand isn't a.
Time to open, what time is it open at eight? The shelter?
She's got a thing in this.
Five, nine, nine o'clock, seven to nine, depending on staffing, is when they ask people to be out.
My tour of Del's Lake to find the cordial is a smart man, I would buy it.
There were five, there were four guests there last night, we had a board meeting.
I'll get a couple more dates again on that, so.
It says they have volunteers cover five to eleven P M shifts and provide meals, they have an employee go part-time that works eleven to seven. Uh, to cover the main times to kind of coordinate volunteers, I suppose, Sunday through Thursday, and one who works seven to nine A M, Monday through Friday, and then one that works eleven to nine. That works the overnight shift, shift on weekends, because I suppose it's tough to get volunteers to work the overnight shift on weekends.
Okay, we're entertaining the motion, come on. Eric, we want to just write that in, we don't need a motion.
Lewis Watts.
We, we can.
Okay.
My, my only other question was gonna be, and what was the last name is, so by moving up to where we're moving up to, how many statement things, does everybody get one of those projected things, is that just standard now? So it doesn't matter if we move up one percent to twenty percent, everybody gets one of those projected tax things. So it doesn't matter if we get under a certain level right now, they're getting one, so. All right, I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary budget for twenty-one.
Okay.
Sorry, we can tackle this next month then, huh? Well, I'm fine with moving those two things around, and then we can, we can, we're at a level we can cut longer.
You can. I mean, this is the starting point.
Yeah, well, the thing is, I mean, you don't wanna scare anybody with, uh, you know, what you're sending out, but I don't think six percent is, six and a half, where we're at, is necessarily, I mean, we can find our way back on, hopefully, closest break.
Okay, we got a motion, do we have a second?
Sir.
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Your call.
Britt?
Hi.
Olson?
Hi.
Wakefield?
Hi.
Lighton?
Hi.
Brown?
Hi.
Okay.
Christopher Jager.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning, sir. Chris, Christopher? Christopher, Chris, either way.
Okay, nice to meet you.
Jeffrey.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Again. We met.
We met.
Candy?
Candy, the author.
Thanks, Miss Candy.
Hey, welcome, glad to have you. Tell us a little bit about yourself, your background, description of how you think it relates to this position.
Okay. I was raised here at Del's Lake. Started all the way through grade school, through college, transferred off into Mayville, graduated Mayville in a search of more or less the managerial side of life. I did graduate with the business, um, our bachelor business. I've kind of followed that suit through my work. Kind of either been looked at or been brought upon manager side. Uh, a lot of my work deals with, now, my current work deals with the public, and, um, my employees, so. It's kind of where I started looking off towards this position. Uh, some of the other correlations I, I guess I could put together would be that, you know, I, I'm the foreman of our, our crew, and I make sure that all my guys are out there being safe on a daily basis, and that. I guess as job one, because if everyone's safe, we're making money, and of course, the company's making money in return.
Anything else, sir?
Hope I didn't miss anything that you, that you asked.
I will have three questions. Would you please describe your interest in becoming emergency and risk management, floodplain administrator?
Absolutely, um, it just kind of seemed that it was a, a, a fit for me, where I can use some of the knowledge that I've had in trying to reduce the risk for my, my guys, my current employees. And kind of correlate that to the, to the public, because the risk management is always trying to keep everyone safe.
Okay, you have any, you have no experience in, other than just what you're doing on your present job?
Not direct in emergency management, no. Just have a huge drive into learning and. Trying to make the. Best of every situation I can.
Describe the methods you use to learn new information and develop relationships with other specialists.
One of the big things, um. Actually, could re, could I listen to my question one more time, please?
Describe the method you use to learn new information.
New information, okay.
And develop relationships with other specialists.
A lot of it's a lot of hands-on, um. Of course, you need your research, but hands-on, direct, direct work with, with things seem to, to work really well. Um, whether it's taking a course or working hand-in-hand with someone, um, someone else. That way, at least. You're not just reading it, you're seeing it, you're feeling it, you're doing it, and usually becomes easier. Uh, that way.
One thing I should add, any commissioners got a follow-up question to any of these questions, just go ahead and interrupt and ask at the end, if I can. Put the ask after each question, if that's, hope it is, but. New information, you're quite. You know, what would you describe that as, new information, where you find it?
So, um, recently, my, my, the industry I work in is always changing, it's always evolving, everything is new pretty much every day, whether it's. New routers or new servers, you've constantly gotta, to be on top of that as best as you possibly can, and. A lot of that information is currently out there, either by the companies who are producing it, or there's, uh, seminars that we attend. Where we're going and learning as a, as a group of people, that way, we're all on the same playing field, so you can all, if need be, we can call each other. And bounce that information back and forth to each other.
Mark?
Recall an occasion when you had to work with people from different divisions to accomplish a single goal.
I guess, uh, this current fiber optic project and, um, the telephone companies, um. That's currently what I'm working with, they, uh, they have people from the underground crew, installs, upper management, everything's going to the greater goal of getting. All this, uh, infrastructure in the ground working, so all the customers can benefit from the new technology of fiber optics.
What is the key to success when communicating with the public?
Key to success, I believe, would be. Having an open communication with them, communicating on a level that they understand, talking above and below them. Being very specific, very detail-oriented, where they. First of all, they know the less worries and troubles that they might may or may not have, so be very specific in dealing with public.
Provide a time when you dealt calmly and effectively in a high-stress situation.
Um, had a. I can think of a few, but I, one in particular, we had, uh, uh, they call it a hit, it was underground hits of power, and it, actually. Not some customer result, actually, it was half a city block. When they found, uh, of course, there was a few of us, when they found us working, they, they understood, they understood that it was, it was our problem and that we're very upset. Um, a few people were screaming, but, uh. All we had to do was just let them know that we are fixing things, we are getting the steps in pro- in motion. To make sure that everything's gonna be restored back to, back to normal.
Yep. Mr. Jager, could you provide a time when you successfully developed or implemented a training procedure or strategy, and what factors did you consider in the procedure?
Yes, um, we currently use a lot of sharp instruments, one in tanning is a hooked blade, it's, um, it's not the funnest thing to ever find your skin with. So the, the tools that we use, of course, we have to be able to feel what we're working with. But they, they issued cut resistance gloves, resistant gloves, and the way of cutting it, is how they show they like it used. I found that it was easier just to be pulling away out from you, and we've actually, that is the new industry standards. We used to pull down between us, but now it's pulled out, so if case the blade ever broke, or it slipped off of the table leg, it wouldn't impale you or possibly do very, very bad harm.
Can you describe why experience you have with grant work, planning, writing, and weekends?
I'll do it.
Thank you.
I actually don't have, uh, a lot of experience in grant writing, uh, I know this job does refer to quite a bit of it. Did a little research, that's about all I can, I can say, I'll be, I'll be honest about that.
Okay, so, uh, our, our next question was, tell us about a branch you roped in with, and was funded, tell us about the challenges you faced and how you overcame them. Uh, without getting into.
It.
Doing one, pretty tough to answer that, so.
It, it does.
Thank you for your honesty.
Yeah.
Hey. Just a follow-up. Would you be interested in writing grants? Do you think you have the knowledge and wherewithal to? Learn how to, learn how to do it, I guess.
Absolutely, if the tools are out there that I can pick up and, and utilize to write grants, absolutely, I mean, it. It'll look, like I said, I just looked up a little bit of research, so a little bit of research I did, I feel that I'm very capable of doing so.
Okay.
Of course, I'm sure it's a little bit of a learning curve, but.
Yeah, I'm sure it is, yeah.
If I could be brought up to speed as of taking a course or what have you, I would definitely be interested in doing so.
You think you're persistent to day after one, you know, it takes.
I'm sure it takes a little bit of time. Um, yeah, if, if the greater goal is to, to, of course, grant money, if you wanna get it, you're gonna have to try and, and you have to dig after as best as you possibly can.
Go ahead, David.
Uh, describe any experiences that you have with floodplain administrative duties and, um, I, I suppose if you don't have any of them.
Don't really have a bunch of the floodplain stuff, uh, just with working through, through the telephone company and how they had to get some right-of-ways and make sure you don't cross into certain floodplain areas, I do know that, that's, that's about my, uh, information on that.
Okay, um, and, and we sort of touched on, on this before about being in sort of a changing envi- environment, um. But in general, people react differently, uh, to changing, uh, job demands, uh, and duties, uh, how do you feel that you would react to this?
I, I tend to be very flexible, because if you're gonna be stuck in your ways, you tend to never advance. You need to, you need to be flexible to, to gain the knowledge that you obviously don't have prior, so flexibility is, is huge.
Okay. Um, and then the last question I have for you is, is if I call and talk to your last boss, what would they say that your strengths and weaknesses are?
Uh, if you talk to, uh, my boss, he would say that I'm, I'm the go-getter, um. Usually very little, uh. Auto-posh this, uh, I, I don't require a lot of supervision, I don't, I don't need the helping hands a lot, but I'm not scared to, to ask for them either. He also would say that all my paperwork is always detailed, it's, it always is top-notch where he's not asking. Whether or not I've crossed all my, all my Ts and dotted all my Is.
Okay.
Okay. Well, you kind of, you kind of just touched on this, um, uh, the job of, uh.
The job of emergency manager, floodplain manager is, is a lot of minimal supervision. How do you handle working under minimal supervision?
Um, very well. The current position that I hold, I've, I rarely talk with my, my boss unless it's at the end of the fiscal year, at the end of the month. We, we do, of course, conversate with other things, but the su- the supervision is to get the job done, and I usually don't have to hear and plug it or.
Okay.
As long as, uh, as long as everything's going in the correct direction.
For example, um, one of the requirements for this position, and it was listed under the basic requirements, is, uh, fifteen minutes response time from the courthouse. If you were offered this position, would you be able to meet this requirement as well as, um, uh, you know, the, the job of emerging, emergency manager, uh, there's, can be varying hours at times, things like that, twenty-four-seven type work, uh, you know, if there is an emergency?
Absolutely.
Would you have any problem meeting those requirements?
No, no. Just across town, it wasn't, won't take me long to get here.
Okay. I guess from our aspect, uh, is there any other information you would like us to know about yourself or, or about any of your interests in the job?
One of the things, uh, I kind of, I'm, I'm proud of myself usually, is I, I stick to a job, I get it done, I do it right, I do it to the best of my ability. I have no indication of leaving Devil's Lake, my fiancee and I were business owners, so we are not planning on leaving town anytime soon. The, uh, the work is always educational, and I, and I do find it, learning on a daily basis, or even on a weekly basis, or whatever, as long as I'm learning something new, it's, it drives me to stay, and, and this, reading up on emergency managers, it seems like it's kind of a ongoing learning process on a daily, and, uh, it's kind of fun to be full knowledge.
Hey, thank you.
Yeah. One of the requests I have from the public was, from the media, and how would you handle informing the public about an emergency, or to prevent an emergency on a, probably a monthly basis anyway?
Okay.
On what you're doing, uh, public credations, I guess I should put it that way, you know? How do you think you could handle dealing with the media?
Oh.
I mean, it's.
I'm sure it's tough at times, I'm sure it's very trying.
Yeah.
I listen to, uh, the radio, of course, and, uh, Eric, he likes to ask a lot of hard questions, and I, and I, I've definitely heard.
That's the one that asked me. To bring this up, so.
You know, as long as, uh, we had an open communication line, I, I wouldn't be scared of answering any questions set forth, whether it be TV, radio, or, or telephone.
That's kind of the key with him, is I don't think he'd potentially throw anybody under the bus, I don't believe.
I don't believe.
But, uh, you know, he's, he's the one that asks, and you, you got the newspaper and TV stations at times, and you think you can handle that?
Yeah, I've actually, uh, every year, a group of us, we raise money for search and rescue, and did interviews on the radio, on the TVs. Newspaper was real easy, they, they seemed just to know the right questions I asked, and it was easy to follow up, but, um.
Uh, they can help you a lot.
Yeah, they do, they do.
Search and rescue, you were involved with that, you said?
I raised money for them every year.
Really?
Yep. Group of us guys, we, uh, ride motorcycle, and we raised money, actually, it'll be a couple more weekends here, and, uh, been raising money for search and rescue for just our tenure.
Okay.
And, uh, we do little things throughout, um, we actually work really strong with Stutman Harley-Davidson out of, out of, uh, Jamestown, and we raise money for the VFW here in town as well.
Search and rescue is one of the things emergency managers kind of.
Tie in.
With, you know, and as you know, the new building in.
Yep.
Ramsey County are very interested in keeping search and rescue and.
It's needed.
That very active.
Definitely needed here, definitely needed.
Definitely needed. You know, when you got volunteers, you better have a facility, you know, to keep their equipment, a place where they can train.
Right.
And that's why it was an easy decision to put that building up, I thought, so.
That's a.
Why not have something good for them, 'cause they are volunteering.
Yeah. They're, uh, some diehard dedicated men.
Very, yeah.
Yeah.
Very good people, the community.
Yep.
And, uh, I'm probably tooting your horn, but very, very, very.
I'll be right, I'll be right there with you, man.
It's a good point, any other activities you have, other than search and rescue, along the community?
Fishing, hunting.
Yeah.
Pretty happy fisherman. I tend to like ice fishing more than summer fishing, I don't have a boat, but.
Do you, uh, participate in the tournaments, or?
Uh, sadly, I.
Probably the winner fishing.
Winner fishing, one I do, you know, just see how long I can freeze on the, on the dundra.
I guess one of the questions I have here is, if you were offered this position, when would you be able to start?
I would definitely have to give my, uh, my current employment a little bit of notice.
See?
I mean, um, but beyond that, uh, I would say a couple weeks after I get noticed, and
Let's go back to that grant writing a little bit, 'cause that's one of the things that we're very interested in tying this in with that disposition.
Okay.
I mean, you're on your own, I mean, at the computer or wherever you're gonna work for this grant, right? How do we know what success you're having? Are you gonna be able to, do you think, inform us on how you're doing for a certain grant, or, you know, and, what you, another thing I should explain to you, emergency management, you're involved with the state a lot, there's a state office, and there's a state director, and, and in fact, the state funds a half of his salary for the county. So you're kind of under their guidance or just somewhere, you know? But, uh, how, how do you think this grant writing would affect?
I think, um, just like I said earlier, if I could, I maybe do a little research or maybe talk with the state and find what their parameters are of how they usually write the grants, um, if there's grants out there to, to apply for, of course, apply for that, find out the status of that, keep you guys informed as I find out of the, uh, grant writing.
Do you think you could work on your own on this and be successful?
I, I, I feel like I should, I, I should be able to do it as long as, like I said, I'd like at least a stepping stone, a training tool.
Okay.
Um, in the grant writing, whether I have to take a class on it or whatever, but I'd definitely be willing to learn.
Do you have any questions for us?
Uh, actually, I do have a few questions, um. One of the, one of the main ones I was kind of curious about is the daily, the daily responsibilities that the emergency manager does, is it, is it just grant writing? Is it, is there a, a true daily, day-to-day operations of, of that?
Why don't Mr. Criff answer that, are you involved with it at one time?
Yeah, well, it, it's, uh, showing up, I guess, is, is the big thing to start with, is, um, we do require, uh, you know, you get it, Monday through Friday is operation in the courthouse kind of thing, and I, you know, would, would expect that that would be acceptable whoever applied, you know, obviously. Uh, day-to-day would be, um, there are certain deadlines and timelines that have to be met for all your state requirements, your state grants, the, uh, EMPG, the, the hazmat grants, you know, and, and those plans as well that go along with those, and so once those plans are, are done and created, then the state will, then you qualify your jurisdiction for those, those grants that are available, and whether it be, you know, equipment dollars for, and you will work closely with the sheriff's department, police, law enforcement, uh, fire and rescue, uh, throughout all the jur- the entire county, you know, so we have, what is there, seven, uh, you know, incorporated cities, you know, you work with all their mayors and making sure that they sign off on your emergency operations plan and different things like that, so, uh, you know, you work hand-in-hand with them. Uh, so, uh, a lot of it is self-motivation, um, getting down in, in the office and making sure that everything is submitted on, on a kind of basis kind of thing. You know, it is, uh, yeah.
You spend a lot of time preparing for stuff you hope doesn't happen.
Right.
Right.
Essentially.
That's good.
Yeah, I mean, you, you did, and, and I, I think, I guess from, uh, to expand upon what Jeff's talking about, a lot of relationship building, you know, uh, working, like you said, with the different departments.
Yeah.
Uh, so when you have something occurs, when it occurs, you know, the first call is, you know, bang, 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 who to work with, and things like that, so you have those relationships with the small towns with, with everything. Also, there's obviously some upkeep and maintenance on things like, uh, making sure the small towns get their sirens and things like that, happens occasionally, stuff like that, so there's a, all kinds of interesting job duties that come with it.
And there's a lot of grants available for some of those things, 'cause a lot of these smaller communities can't afford a new, or a new siren, you know, for a, a warning siren or a weather siren or what have you. You know, there's, there's working with the National Weather Service, putting on the sky-worn glasses, different things like that. It's opening the building when it's, uh, we have a, a, an emergency warning, um, you know, a tornado warning, people look to the courthouse for shelter, um, and those kind of things, um.
Our bas- our basement is a storm shelter.
Yeah.
You know, but like, like, uh, Commissioner Lightborn indicated, a lot of it is planning for things that you hopefully never happen, and then working on, uh, training for with the entities that would be involved in that. So you'd be having various exercises in order to make sure that those things, what goes right, what goes wrong, how can we improve our responses to, and, and a great example of that would be tomorrow up there at the airport, they're having a full-scale exercise up there with mock, uh, a mock disaster, complete with actors simulating injured personnel type of thing, and, and how the airport personnel and fire rescue, emergency management would all respond to that. Uh, that's part of their requirements, but it would also accomplish one of the emergency management goals for the county as well. How comfortable are you presenting in front of a crowd, um, you know, if there's a, something coming down the, the, you know, as far as flood, floodplain management, or flood insurance rates, or different things like that, or, or making a presentation to emergency responders that you're, you're working hand-in-hand with, and you're comfortable putting together a, a presentation and, and coordinating all this type of?
Yeah. It helps too, and I know some of them, that's the, that's the major place.
Yeah, it certainly is.
Any other questions for us, Chris? I hope we answered it.
Yeah, very, very well, very well. I just, there was some of the things I wasn't sure about, you nailed them. I have a few, if you guys don't mind.
Go ahead.
Okay. I guess some of the other things is like, the opportunities would I have to learn? That is, uh, I'd asked it earlier, or I stated it earlier, is there a, is there, uh, is there seminars, is there training things that, that are involved?
State puts on that, huh?
State?
State puts on, uh, courses, there'll be online courses, uh, FEMA, uh, will have some federal courses that they will have, uh, I'm not sure how much they do their, um, training out in, what is it, Bixburg, Virginia, or whatever, we used to, Tim used to go to a lot of those.
Yeah.
Out there federally, um, and, you know, so there's training opportunities, uh, the, the state has an association, um, and, you know, the emergency management, uh, group, first responders, they, they become a community, uh, they're a very good resource for you, and they're very, all very helpful. Uh, the state is, state will have your back, um, with whatever help you need to, to learn and grow.
And this commission has always been extremely supportive of employees seeking continuing education and working to do their job better.
Mention I was gonna make, roll out your back too, if there's something you wanna learn, or we'd like to invest in our employees for something wonderful.
State, the state people are amazing to work with.
Yeah.
I've kind of taken over some of the duties since the previous one, and all I have to do is make a phone call and.
Simple.
It's, yeah.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
One of the things is a storm shelter in the basement, you know, it's opened up and there's a tornado or a warning or anything like that, and we'd like to have you, you know, be able to open the door and.
Yep.
Take care of that, you know, you don't have to be at twenty-four-seven, if you're out of town, just, you know, let somebody know, or.
Yep.
Deputy, or, you know, somebody else that.
Someone that's capable.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
So, uh, kind of like the direct supervisor, like, who would I turn to if I had, um, any direct questions? Would it be the board as yourselves, would it be someone just a direct person to go to?
That's a good question, we're still kind of up in the air on that.
I think, I think a lot of it probably depend on the question, what would be, um.
Yeah, traditionally, the, the chair has been who's overseeing the emergency manager, so, but, I mean, you're gonna work with a lot of the different department heads on all kinds of different things, so there's a lot of contact in terms of questions to, whether it be Candy or.
Sheriff will set her names, yeah.
Well, I mean, let's not.
Sweet, no, sweetie.
Well, let's not get ourselves, whenever we have a question, we can ask it.
Okay.
Yeah, but in terms of direct supervision, uh, most likely you'll be given, uh, a portfolio holder as one of the members of this body, uh, and if you have sort of basic level questions, things like requesting leave or whatever it is, that would be appropriate to handle with the portfolio holder. Larger things, which you can't, you can absolutely bring anything you want up to your portfolio holder, um, but sort of larger issue items will have to come before this body.
Okay. Other than that, I guess I, you guys pretty much answered a couple of other questions I had, um. Anything else I can help you guys answer?
Crystal, would you have any questions for Mr. Jager?
I don't, that's fine.
Well, there's no other questions? Thanks for your time.
Thank you guys, I appreciate it, appreciate your time.
Pleasure.
Pleasure, thank you very much. Thanks very much.
You're welcome, Chris Criff, have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we've got six minutes.
This is Scott Total.
Hey.
This is the commission.
How's it going?
Good.
You're welcome. Scott?
Yeah.
How you doing?
Pretty good. Scott?
You're welcome, nice to meet you.
Second commissioner's meeting of the day. But there's a few less than medicine going on today.
How do you do? We're glad to see you here today. Probably shortened this up a little bit, maybe, I don't know. We have a question here, number fourteen, what are the requirements of this position, Scott? Is that you live within fifteen minutes response time to this courthouse? If you were offered this position, would you be able to meet this requirement?
I've thought about that for a while, I'm looking at the wave scales and things. I don't know that I would be willing to do that.
Now we're trying to take that as a no?
Yeah. So I didn't know if I should just call ahead or?
Yeah, that's fine, yeah. What suggests a year in between the interviews to? So it suggests to you in between the interviews to go ahead and ask that question first, so I'll try to get it.
Kind of thought it might come up pretty quick.
Yeah, but it wasn't until fourteen, so. But I guess we won't make that exception again. It wasn't put in plain writing the last time when we hired your emergency manager.
Yeah, I didn't know it may, you know, what's that was flexible or.
We just weren't gonna dance around it again, so.
And it's not like I'm dissatisfied where I'm at.
No, that's fine. That's fine. I don't think there's any reason through the formality of it again, so.
Yeah, that's that's fine. It's totally your decision.
Okay, so. Thank you for your time. You're welcome.
That was quick.
Yeah, thank you, Scott.
All right. No problem. So what did happen?
Tom?
Is that how you wanted it done?
I think that was reasonable to give him.
Alright, we're.
Making it a requirement. Yeah, I mean, it's it's a minimum requirement if he's not willing to meet it.
I believe there's no way.
Well, the only question, the only question would be like you said on the week's scale, what would it take to, you know, because he's got previous experience. What would it take to get him to?
That would have been, that would have been a good general curiosity question, but.
Yeah, I think I'm guessing it would be pretty decent to get him to.
I think it'd be quite high.
Yeah.
You know, Mark knows him and I know him, Scott, and I don't know if you'd be.
You'd have to go from one end of this wage scale to the other, I'm sure. And then it would probably still be enough.
And then it'd still be enough, you know. But you know, it'd be kind of like one of us operating that probably your own community.
People gave me a bunch of money all the time anywhere.
That that's just it, dude, a bunch. And I don't know if we're willing to to go a bunch.
Yeah, I mean, you have to make it worth it.
Okay. We have one candidate then.
Was there anyone else in the six you looked at that met minimum qualifications that would be worth bringing in since we didn't have a second candidate?
There's one that but didn't have the minimum because didn't live, lived in Benson County at this time.
But they met everything else? Did they have any background experience?
No.
Not with directly with like emergency manager grant writing. They were like with the fire department. No education completed. Some of them had some issues with the.
Three of them, no.
And the other three, there was no, none of them met.
There was two that were like that way. One was, what was it, highway department or used to be highway department, but not, didn't probably directly make up an emergency response plan or, you know.
Yeah, they they had some kind of related work experience, but not necessarily.
Right.
Matched up.
No more than what we all agree.
It's kind of his rationale, like this one here was with that business degree, the grant writing would probably flow a little bit easier with that business degree. I felt comfortable with them.
See, what?
Just, I mean, just in the room in general.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, I'm just, you know.
Well, you know, I I think it's one of those jobs that can be very easily learned.
Grow into.
And grow into. You look at our our previous, none of them really had an abundance of emergency management experience, but you know, sometimes it was baptized by fire.
Right.
You know, so I I think the individual that we interviewed would be a good candidate for for this position. So and I think they fit in and learn and grow and I think he's, sounds like he's willing to do that.
And to add, Kristen did, I mean, I shared it with Crystal because she was kind of asking me different questions pertaining to that job and I I didn't know the answers, but I knew that Kristen had like a what? Like a scenario, not really a scenario, like a whole, like a full like everything she she does.
Yeah.
Like who to contact.
It's all there, it's there.
You know, phone numbers.
The state's gonna direct them on what they wanna do.
Well, the emergency operations plan is a big one and as long as that's complete with all the contact information in there and and when it hits the fan, you know, that's the the go to bible that you turn to. Um and when it's complete, it's kind of designed for anybody to step into that position, flip to the page and be able to know what to do in in that type of a situation and who to contact. And keeping those contact lists up to date is is kind of the big thing and and the state and our local people that we have within our communities are really essential to that and and they'll be a great resource for whoever would be ready to do that position.
Anything else, Martin Fisher, let's give your rationale against.
I just think if we do it, maybe it's a, like you said, it's just a baptism by fire, but maybe as we go along this time, we should have them come in frequently and say, okay, I'm working on grant A, B, C, D, and E. So that we know that they're actually pushing it forward and moving it instead of, you know, I'm working on this grant. Well, okay, and for the six months go by, we don't know where they're at with that grant.
I I agree. I want, like, I think it would be appropriate to have them come in with a one pager like Stacy does.
Absolutely.
I love that one pager.
Yeah.
You know, how many veterans did you see where it's?
Simple, simple.
Well, yeah, it it doesn't have to be a book. It just, this is what I worked on and, you know, now I know where we're at.
It's good point, both of you. I mean, Stacy's is a good example.
Yeah.
But we asked, we asked, but we knew it was out of here, but we've been doing it ever since.
Yeah, it's been great. I guess.
Let's make sure we put that on the next veteran's line.
Yeah.
Show them how to do it.
My, you know, overall, I felt like the candidate's heart was in, you know, in the right place and I think that an ounce of motivation is always worth a pound of experience, you know, that I'm I'm of that opinion, so I agree with Jeff. The thing that I did feel throughout the entire interview was he was very light on specifics, light on detail. And I didn't have the sense that he had really deeply researched the position at all. You know, in terms of duties and functions and those types of things. You know, a couple of different times he said, I did a little research and when we asked him, you know, where do you get your information? He didn't give any, any information. He did say, he didn't say professional journals. He didn't say, you know, online resources or that sort of thing. And I only wanna voice all of that to to say that that I'm hopeful that that's not the work ethic that he would bring into the county is this sort of this, well, I gave it ten minutes time, you know, and maybe I was wrong, but that was my, that was my interpretation of it.
I think you're kind of right on interpretation of it, but he there was really not a guideline there. I mean, it's like, what does this do well? Who do you ask her to do well?
Yeah, on that, on that portion, yeah.
Oh, I know, but that was not a problem that he asked those questions, you know, who like, who would be my supervisor? That not, not a problem, but he asked one question in the beginning that was like, what would my day of day duties be like? And you'd think that if you looked up what what their manager's responsible for, you'd at least have some sense of.
We don't, yeah, because. Go ahead, Adam.
I don't, I don't have necessarily anything other than what's been said. I mean, he seems like like a good, a good individual. It's it's a matter of, like Louis said, to me, fit isn't necessarily experience as much as it's we need somebody that's a self-starter, that's willing to learn, uh that's willing to put the time in to do it now. You know, you know, I I just from the interview, I thought he did fairly well, but I did get that same same kind of feel that, you know, how much background information did he dive into to to get the the real crux of it? I mean, I mean, and I'm not saying, but maybe you can go Google or whatever emergency management, probably pull up all kinds of information about it.
I mean, I didn't.
So, I mean, how much?
I wonder what I know.
Yeah, how much background knowledge did he gather before, you know? And and I'm not, that doesn't necessarily mean that he's not willing to learn. But I think the most important and the problem is, is you're not gonna know if somebody's really a self-starter until you put them in a job and see if they're a self-starter, unfortunately, other than talking to references. And I think that would be beneficial to make sure that, you know, if he says he's detail oriented, he's a self-starter. If he's detail oriented, he's a self-starter. Because we need those two things.
And I and I agree with, and provided that that those two things are true, I would not have a problem with candidate.
No, I would, I mean, if he said, if he's had good work output where he's working now and he's on top of things and he gets the job done without having to be honored to get the job done, those are the two most important things in this job to me. Because otherwise you could sit down in that office and he's kind of, you know. I mean, and I don't blame people when that happens to a player, but I mean, that's human nature is kind of like, ah, I heard a lot about work.
Hey, Crystal? What are you doing?
I I heard the great comments.
Do you use a self-starter?
I think it sounded like he's willing to learn. I mean, I think that's one of the things.
Would you suggest we check out these references?
I would, yeah.
Would you wanna do that?
Sure can. Anything specific you guys are looking for? You guys have a question you want to ask about self-starter?
I didn't like that. It's a self-starter. I don't think you.
Yeah, I my question's like you said, you know, he did a lot of work about supervision. Okay, did, one, is that true? So he's, is he a self-starter? Does he go and get the job done because he knows it needs to get done? And in that work is the work output being good? Is he really detail oriented or was it kind of just like, you know, get it done, talk to him, corner it?
Well, and sorry, just that. That was another, that was another answer of his that kind of concerned me, which is not so much that he was autonomous and self-starter, but it was when he said, uh, there are times where I don't talk to my boss in forever, you know, or like large amounts of time and it's like, well, that's not what I I want out of this position either. I want, like I said, Stacy style reports. I wanna know specifically what's happening, but I don't need you to come in every single day and tell me or ask me what you should be doing. But yeah, so I I'm gonna add on to to that. I I'd be curious to know how his previous employers felt his uptake of knowledge was. You know, how how rapidly was he becoming proficient in the positions that he was in?
Unfortunately, if you look, the last two employers, he doesn't want you to contact.
Yeah, I know. And that's what's gotten me a little, um, shooting resume. Now, part of it is maybe he doesn't want his current employer to be contacted because then he doesn't want to know he's looking for a job, which is.
Cause that brings me to my next question. If you look at his rate of pay, it doesn't fall within our salary range.
He was aware of the pay, I mean, five, right?
Yeah, it was close, the salary rate was close to.
Where's the rate of PR?
Uh, it's under his thirty two fifty. Yeah, right here.
Oh, and you pay it three percent.
Okay. All per hour?
Well, I think part of that too is though if he's doing telecom type of stuff, it's probably seasonal. So maybe you get paid more because you're only working summer months. Cause that's what I'm saying. He's leaving, looking for stable work. He wants something, and he works out in Minnesota because of what he's doing. You know, he wants a job that's here.
Oh, I just, those are, I I read between the lines a lot and I read.
Oh, I don't disagree with you. I mean.
Yeah, you got, yeah, stable job.
You probably don't wanna contact them. They're gonna look for a job, yeah.
Stable job with benefits, you know, yeah, that's worth a lot more than, like you said, he's maybe seasonal, he maybe doesn't get benefits where he is.
Yeah.
Which is maybe why the higher raises are.
So you're.
Do you read now or?
Oh, no, I I no, I like it from the get-go. I I think he's one of those quiet go-getters guys. I, that's what I root for. I'm I'm all right. Other than the fact that I'd like him to come with a paper, like, and we could talk. Okay, seven grants on the table and this is where I stand with all.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's one of the things you implement any dollar owed. I mean, I don't think there's any question we wanna do that.
You could, you can ask that many department heads.
Well, I'm kind of confused right now because it says. Oh, okay. You can't, you can't contact the supervisor unless another employee at the at the business he's working at now.
And we do, we still do the six months trial rate?
We do.
Don't we do still the six month trial?
Um, so we don't have a probationary period anymore because we're at will. So at any point, it's a separate.
On two thousand.
At any point.
At any point.
That being said, when we hired a library director, just to make sure that they were aware of that, we we still said here, be like a six month probationary period. You've nothing is really different in that timeframe.
Yeah, that's fine, but I mean, if I be chairman, I don't know, am I gonna document something, you know, and I'm not in building or wasting money?
Yeah, I mean, and yeah, that's the problem.
Yeah, it is.
That's always the problem, not just on a, just on a new hire, on the long term. You know, we got a general idea of what the emergency manager is supposed to be doing.
Yeah.
But we're not there every day to double check your work product, you know.
That's what I was very adamant about, putting a month in your department.
You know, you know, I mean, I mean, he's putting, he's putting a starting, a starting rate and then an ending rate. So it doesn't necessarily mean.
Pardon me?
He's, you know, they're asked, they ask for a starting pay rate and an ending pay rate. Doesn't necessarily mean that that is, you know.
But it sounds to me, unless I'm wrong, everybody kind of agrees, we're all right. Should we have, should I suggest this? Do we have Crystal? Crystal? Check out the references?
I think.
And if there is no problem, if you see no problem, you can communicate to me, Crystal. And if there's no problem, we go ahead and offer the job. Is that what you want?
Well, are we gonna run a background check also?
Yeah, I'd always contention on background check, everything.
All the normal checks, are we?
Should do that, you know.
But I mean, as long as, as long as we can run a background check and 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 Crystal finds, you know, that the the references give relatively sterling reviews, then I suppose I I don't have a problem.
Should we wait till the next meeting? It's only two weeks out.
No, I I would be comfortable with making a motion that as long as the the reference and background checks come back in a positive manner and and Crystal communicates with Chairman Brown, that we go ahead and offer Mr. Jager the position.
Okay.
And a salary rate.
Right, yeah, we need to decide that, though.
Decide the salary.
Well, where's the starting at, is there?
I think it's listed in there at thirty nine hundred to forty three sixty nine, when that's experienced. Listed on our.
Crystal, you would say thirty nine hundred then, or is that what we should use?
I would go on the lower side, yeah.
Doesn't have any experience.
Experience would.
With emergency management.
With emergency management or?
Or grant writing or flood plain management.
I think that's, I think that's a good place to start on the low end and then if if he is working out, we can.
Well, we.
Yeah, because you don't know if he's gonna come back and counter offer.
And we have to have some wiggle room then and, you know, if we, you know, regardless of whether or not we have that six month probationary period or not, you know, the first of the year is coming up relatively within the next four months and if things seem to be working to the positive, you know, there's, you know, that from everybody else is gonna get their raises for twenty twenty.
Candy, could you tell me what Kristen was getting just approximately? You got a rough, I didn't work on. Forty three, is that the top end of it?
No, that's just the entry.
That's entry.
Are we, what what level step were we starting at?
I think it was, so thirty nine hundred would be the first and I think the forty three sixty nine is around the fifth.
Fifth.
I'm thinking right now.
Yeah, I mean, and that's where I'm more comfortable starting at the four.
Fifty four.
Fifty four.
Then how long was she with the company?
Uh, eight years, nine years.
Fifty four would be.
I'm good. If I could do that.
Or forty five hundred?
Okay.
So she was probably like step seven. Okay.
She wasn't making fifty four a month then?
Yes, yeah. Two over a year.
Oh, oh, okay. Okay.
So she must have been at least step seven now.
Well, that's sort of irrelevant, I think. If if we're comfortable offering an entry level salary.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just, I'm just thinking back to past positions that we've offered and like, what do we offer, carry the state's attorney? Well, I'm just, I'm just thinking back to past positions that we've offered and like, what did we offer? Carry the state's attorney position. We started her at step. We started her up a little bit cause she had experience, but she had never been a state's attorney. Candy, we started, you know, you have twenty years' experience when you step in the OHS position, we started you at seven on the OHS scale, I believe. So, if you don't have any experience, I think it's reasonable to say we're gonna start you at step one. And like you said, if, if everything's working out well, we can always jump that step after four months or whatever, whatever we're able to. I think, and like you said, they might get going off.
Yeah, and he could come in in those four months, like you said, and he's got twenty-nine grants already.
Yeah, and maybe, and if, we'll see how it grows and we reset it first year works. We'll see.
Your, that's a motion, your second motion? Do you have a second to that motion?
Second.
You have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hold. All right, hopefully it can start.
Whatever, I guess. Why is that team, man? The whole bundle plus people for me.
Mine's the best one.
Can we throw it away?
He's doing rankings.
It's only one.
Oh, for the one. Well, I'll take the, no, we have on the first one.
And do you wanna do portfolios or can we adjourn?
Yeah, is there much? The only thing that I have on a portfolio would be the law enforcement center operating a radio report this morning. I, I thought we had an agreement.
How much, how much did the city short?
I thought we had an agreement with them.
How much did the city short?
Well, they're complaining about the seventy-four I left them with, a week of sixty of it.
On the nine-on-one side?
No, that's overall, but yeah, that's nine-on-one, yeah.
So, do you know what they did budget?
I don't know, I just, what Eric said under.
Yeah, cause they finalized their budget, so they're at, they're at the level they're at then unless they can squirrel it from the general or whatever.
But I don't know.
I don't know either. You know, it, uh, it was disappointing, you know, because and with these preliminary budgets, you can go down.
Well, why wouldn't you give yourself wiggle room?
Exactly, yep.
That's a bit frustrating.
I went up to the get go and sat with Dale for twenty minutes out of all, and I honestly thought we had an agreement.
Well, it's meaningless.
And I thought I was very generous. I think the commission here felt I was maybe a little too generous with maybe the feeling I got, that he didn't say nothing, but that's fine, I thank you for giving me that much leeway, but I thought I had an agreement, but. But I don't know what we're gonna have to do.
That is, I should make mention of that, the, uh, the next full Forward Devils Lake Board meeting is on the twenty-first and it's gonna be our, the third tax act, you know.
I'm gonna make a mention too on Forward Devils Lake. I don't know if any of you have been on their website. Forward Devils Lake, their director starts their, there's a little paragraph there. It says Forward Devils Lake is funded by the city of Devils Lake and the county of Ramsey. And then it goes into a discussion about a new bar and grill in Lakota. And I just thought that was.
It's a Facebook page.
It's a Facebook page. I just thought that was horrible. You, you, you get money from Devils Lake City, you get money from Ramsey County, and you're talking about Nelson County and a bar in Lakota, North Dakota.
I will make mention of it.
I, I got a lot of calls.
No, bring it up.
I know one of the previous directors got fired for buying party supplies at somewhere else.
Yeah, it was a chamber director.
Oh, that's what it was. I remember somebody got fired for it.
Well, that might be a little bit overkill, but.
I mean, Lucas, you can go anywhere you want and, and say anything about any, any restaurant or bar you want, but you shouldn't, you shouldn't do it on a page that's funded by Ramsey County.
Well, that, I agree. And no, I, I don't, I don't agree that it was the right thing to do. I was saying that firing somebody with fiery supplies is maybe a little bit severe. But that's, that's nothing over there.
Where's your bread, bread butter kind of type thing, you know?
Okay.
Anything else?
I don't have anything else. Nothing else. Bill and Curie.
Are your cameras working yet? Are they?
Out there? I'm not sure.
I think it's this one.
I thought I washed my hands over last week for a while, I thought, but.
The only thing that I should make mention of, and it's not a huge thing, is the assistant director of the libraries submitted a resignation, so the library's looking for a new assistant director. I, well, I should.
We'll turn that off. Okay, anything else?